Monday, September 11th, 2017, meeting of Dublin City Council. I think all of the parents in the room would agree with me that whenever you have the opportunity to embarrass your children, you should take advantage of that.
Second that motion.
My daughter Tatum and her friend Jill are in the back. Could you two please come forward? You're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on. Come on. She wore slippers.
What else?
She wore slippers. She wore slippers. Okay, go.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, before we get started this evening, I'd like to just take a brief moment to acknowledge that today is, in fact, Patriot Day in our country. It is a day that we set aside to remember those who were impacted, including all of us, and those of those that were killed during the terrorist attacks in the United States in 2001. It is hard to believe that that was 16 years ago that that attack happened in our country. And those images, we will never forget and will indelibly be etched into our minds as a nation. So today, we have many different observances across our country in a variety of different ways, in the ways that we individually do it, displaying our flag or attending different ceremonies, or just maybe offering a moment of silence in the quiet confines of our own minds. But all of those things are very important, and we remember all of those American heroes that we lost on that day. And we also include our thoughts, the veterans and the servicemen and women who continue to protect our freedom every day. That happened 16 years ago, but it has been 16 years since that we have been protected by some very brave and honorable people. And as to the first responders that protect us each day, I'd like to extend our appreciation and thank you to our police chief Hines and all of the men and women that served with you, along with our Washington Township chief. Are you here? He's usually here with us, but Alec O'Connell, we would extend our appreciation to all of them, those that keep us safe day in and day out. And for every one of those observances today, Patriot Day is an important reminder of what binds us all together as Americans and the continuing strengthening and resiliency of our country. So although sometimes it takes tragedy to remind us of what our true common goals are in this country, those can sometimes be good things that come from the bad. So maybe we can just reflect and think about where we were on that day 16 years ago. I can remember very distinctly, and I know what our country went through right after that. We need to just remember that and acknowledge all of those heroes that protected us and continue to do so. So thank you very much. We are going to change the agenda slightly because there is a citizen comment, someone that has signed up for citizen comments, and it is, in fact, on an item that is on the agenda, the Oak Park development. However, she is, needs to be excusing herself earlier than that. So we're going to put citizen comments up in front of special presentations. She's the only one that signed in. We're going to hear from Melvis. Melvis, are you here? Come on forward. So if my fellow council members can just, in your minds, remember her comments when we get to Oak Park, the floor is yours, and then you are free to leave as soon as you need to after that. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, the rest of the city, council members, city manager. Thank you for allowing me to speak a little bit earlier this evening. My name is Melvis Hausman. I'm one of the residents at the Oak Park community, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and some of the other residents, some of which are here tonight if they want to stand up and be acknowledged.
Thank you for coming.
First of all, on behalf of the residents, we are in support of the rezonification of the townhomes to the single-family homes for this subarea D. However, there are three issues that we would like for you to take into consideration as you discuss this issue on the agenda and ultimately decide later this evening. The first issue concerns the look and feel of the community as you enter the main boulevard. There are, the developer is proposing several homes, two groups of homes, four homes, along each side of the main boulevard, and this will be facing the clubhouse in the community. We feel that these homes are large, these are large homes in lots that are considerably smaller than what is currently being built and what is existing in the community. And by comparison, these lots are 55 feet in the terms of the width, about 104 to 105 feet in terms of the depth. The existing homes in the community range in the width between 55 to over 60 feet in terms of the width and about 130 feet in terms of the depth. So these lots are going to be considerably smaller, still the same large house being built there. We think that when you're walking down the main boulevard, these four homes that are being proposed on either side of the main boulevard are going to look tightly packed, and they're basically going to look like a home is right on top of the next home. For this reason, the residents request that you consider asking the developer to remove one of the homes from each side of that area, thereby creating an increased green space as you enter in the main boulevard, as well as increasing the lot size for the remaining homes. The second issue that the residents have a concern with is the maintenance of the private streets and the alleys in that area that is being proposed. We're extremely concerned about the increased costs to these, to this area, particularly because we already pay significantly in property taxes as well as in HOA fees. We're paying $96 a month currently, which adds up to over $1,100 a year. So the concern of adding this cost to our HOA fees is quite significant for us, particularly because we don't know what the future costs are going to be to maintain the big clubhouse that is currently there. We also don't know what the costs are going to be for the proposed fence, the fences that are being proposed to create a barrier between the residential and the commercial lots. We also think that the city is in a better position to negotiate pricing on the maintenance of this area, and for that reason, we ask that the city take on the responsibility of maintaining these streets in the future. And finally, the third issue we want to bring to your attention concerns the removal of a dirt pile that is currently on the back of the community. We understand that this is sitting on a reserve area that is, I believe, owned by the city. It's Reserve Area F. We don't know whose responsibility it is to remove the dirt pile, but if you're walking into our community, you cannot walk on the sidewalk along that area because the vegetation is overgrown onto the sidewalk, and it attracts bugs and insects. So we would like clarification as to whose responsibility it is to remove that dirt pile, clean that area, so that our community is more pleasing for the current residents as well as attractive for the future residents. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hausman. We really appreciate you taking the time to come in. So we will put that on hold for a second and bookmark those thoughts, and we will move to the special presentation regarding Glacier Ridge Metro Park. Tim? Good evening, Tim. How are you? Well, you dress up nicely.
I'm in the middle of coaching a baseball game out of Avery. This is how all of us are Avery coach now. We've really classed up the operations. Members of council, Dana, Matt, I'd really sincerely start off with thank you. This has been a great project, even if I don't get to slide number two. The input from council, your residents, city management, and the Parks and Recreation staff have made this a better project, what you're going to see in a few minutes. There's lots of slides, but I'm going to go through them very fast. But couldn't have been more than six, eight months ago, we started talking about what can we do out at Glacier Ridge that gets more people engaged with some of the spaces out there? And we talked different ideas, and it was, we kind of tied it into our strategic plan, which was done about a year ago. We then talked with city staff, and we kind of came up with these initiatives that were, we believe, some of them shared, some of them pretty unique. We took these comments, and I won't go through them unless we want to talk about them individually. But this collaboration of efforts then turned us in to this master plan for that central area. So when we were last here, we talked about three pretty significant amenities. A dog park, because this part of Dublin, as well as this part of the county, really doesn't have a big dog park to get people out and get their dogs off-leash. We talked about physical fitness, a place for not only adults to get out and get some physical fitness, but really to integrate families. Then we talked about some BMX, mountain biking, something like that. All three phases that were well received, even when I stood here a while ago, I said we're probably not going to be able to get to all three of them right off the bat. So we narrowed in with the input on the challenge course, is what we're calling it, and the dog park. All these slides are going to look very similar, and I'm just going to pull out the important. As we do Phase One of the challenge course, there's room for growth already. If we run into a parking area, we've identified future parking. If we need a facility there for shade, or because classes are happening, it needs to be a shaded structure, we have a spot for that. And ground fitness area, if we're going to bring static equipment out there for people to, similar to the recreation center, to utilize. I think it's got great room for growth. Going to really whip through these. We're going to have an up-and-over. Don't ask questions, because I don't know what half of the audience anyways. A rings area, a balance beam, a pipe crawl. Am I going too fast, audience? Because I can go backwards. This is all fun for me. I'm really trying. I knew you got a full agenda. An up-and-over wall, and this is probably going to be 8, 10, 12 feet tall. An area called the stumps. This is really cool. An over-under, where it forces you to go over the one, under the other. And this is the kind of stuff you're seeing on Spartan dashes and warrior dashes if you stay up late at night watching ESPN like I do. A rope climb with a bell at the top that you have to climb up and get. The proverbial tire run that every person's football coach made us go through, that if you played high school football. This is another real neat one, the trees, where it's really going to utilize upper body strength to reach and then lower body strength to go from stump to stump. And then this will be the signature piece, a gigantic cargo net, not quite that big, but that's the only image we could pull off the internet, to where you can go up and over. I'm going to stop here a little bit on the challenge course. So if you're familiar with Glacier Ridge at all, this center area is in big blue stem grass. It's a native prairie grass. We're here in September. That native grass is almost six feet tall right now. It's spectacular. We're going to integrate these elements within that native prairie, so it's going to be a different world to experience out here. So it's not going to be this mowed turf landscape that's going to stand out like a sore thumb. People are really going to be able to immerse themselves in nature. Each element is going to be different. You won't see it as you're going to the next element. You're going to have to follow the trails. If our success at Saouda Audubon is anything, and this course by far exceeds anything we ever did at Saouda Audubon, this is going to be a very popular amenity on the day we open it. That goes, any questions on the challenge course? Or we want to save them to the end, because you guys have had me enough, you'll know I'll just ramble on and on and on if you let me. Oh, I forgot the last element. I thought the thing. A frog jump, and I don't quite know what that means either, but I've been assured that it's really cool. Phase two of this multi-phase. We're talking a very large dog park here on the, around about as you go around. This is going to be two and a half acre dog park. About an acre and a half of it is going to be out in mowed grass, similar to what everybody's come to expect. Double gating, paved way of getting from the parking lot into it. What's not shown there is there's going to be a concrete looping path that's going to loop down towards the woods, up into the main area. So if you want to get there without getting your feet wet, or you want to go there and drink your Starbucks with your friend, you're going to be able to stay in a confined area when the dogs can have fun. Where I think is going to set this dog park out from most dog parks you've ever seen, about an acre of it is in woodlands. So your dog is going to be able to run through the woods, just like we all like to run through the woods. And to kind of tell you how we're going to do that, these are all mature trees, well-established, not much undergrowth. We're going to have to do some undergrowth work. It's going to come right into what is hole number one on the Frisbee Golf Course today and part of hole number 18 on the Frisbee Golf Course today. We've already reworked those plans to move hole number one a little bit to the left, hole number 18 a little bit to the right. And you can probably tell from my tone, this is a very exciting project. For those dog owners here, or anybody's ever been to a dog park, this is going to be nothing short of amazing the day that it opens. Now, I'm going to kind of make a promise in front of all of council, which is always dangerous. We're doing something a little different here. Everybody in our business has built a dog park, and you get pressured to open it before the turf establishes, because some Parks and Rec director says, well, we need another couple of months to let the turf grow in. And then we all push them too hard, we open it, and then the first weekend's wet, and it's mud from the day it opens until forever. This is already established turf. We're in the process of converting it now, lowering it a little bit on each mowing. So when we're ready to put this in, we'll have an established turf. We're slit seeding this week to get another seed base under it with some other types of turf grasses in there. This should be really good, mature, the day we open the gates. So throw some numbers at you. We've bid out some of this work already. We've really hammered our numbers. We're right around $370,000. Our site improvements, which is flat work, asphalt, concrete for those, we've got right around 170,000. We don't have right around 170,000. That's a hard bid. We have that number in hand. Our challenge course amenities, so those up-and-overs, all of that, we've got that bid in hand. We're at 113,000. The site amenities, we're going to be doing with our staff and a few contractors. That's the fencing for the dog park, benches, drinking fountain, those types of amenities. We're going to do most of that in-house. That's our only rough estimate right now, but it's pretty, we're confident in the number. We're thinking this is going to be about a $370,000 project. What's not shown in that budget, and it's why this slide's up there, we're also repaving three miles of trail at Glacier Ridge with this project. It's not part of this budget, it's part of our ongoing maintenance, how we handle things at Metro Parks. When we get to a lifespan, we continue the maintenance on it. And that is Phase One and 1A of this three-phase project. So how we're looking at it from a partnership with Metro Parks and the city of Dublin, from a public side, this, our park is open 365 days a year. It's going to be built within a 10-acre big blue stem grassland, elements built for teens through adults. It's really tweens through adults. So we've sized most of these challenge course elements, so a 10, 11, 12-year-old can do it as well as a 25-year-old, or 45-year-old, or 65-year-old. A lot of times when you see a challenge course, we age them out, where the younger kids can't do them, or they have to skip some of the obstacles. Within that, and I should have pointed that out, because that's a pretty significant piece, if you look, the green challenge course element is there, we're also paving a one-half-mile fitness loop around here. So if you want to get a mile run in, you just have to do two laps. Or if you're uber-fit, like the mayor, you'll run your half-mile, you'll do a fitness element, you'll run another half-mile and do it. So it's going to be built so you can utilize that as part of the challenge course. But that's a pretty significant element to pave half-mile of brand-new trail within the park. There's your resurfacing of three miles of trail. Now, working with Matt and his staff, that's the real thank you that I have to, Matt sent probably half a dozen of his programming staff, he's hiding from me, out for a couple of brainstorming or charrettes where we built this. Their staff was key in the element choice, where they're located, because they'd really like to start working on using this as an alternative site for programming. So they want to do group fitness classes, individual fitness classes. For their instructors who are already on contract with them, it's a great place for them to expand on their private training. Also, to reach out and start to have you guys do some of our corporate wellness programs out there. So it becomes a destination to bring our local businesses out there. It also opens up that left side of that to outdoor group fitness, and you really can't go through a park in Dublin, I assume, where you don't see these group fitness activities going on. And if you don't know what those are, you'll see somebody shaking big giant two-inch hemp ropes. It's a great place for that. Also, his programming staff came out and said they want a new spot to bring their summer camps to. And Glacier Ridge, frankly, is not a great place for them to bring their summer camps to now. Part of this design, they want to bring the summer camp kids there to engage in the fitness elements. So that's kind of the outcomes we're looking at on this project, and I'm once again not knowing my slides, so I'm going to hit my next slide not knowing what it is. Oh, that's because there isn't a next slide. So the good news for you, I've wrapped up. But just in closing, great project. It's been fun working with you guys. We'd love to continue to work with you on this. We want to work into that third phase of this and then beyond, as this area of our community continues to grow. But this is the time you get to ask me all kinds of questions and tell me I'm all wet and send me out of here.
Yeah, I don't think you mentioned, but isn't the fitness course laid out with two parallel tracks?
Yes. So it's not, it's not a single track, so two people can go at, through all elements at all times.
You can be racing.
Yeah, it would be a location to have a staged race, for sure.
It's really a lot, you know, a lot more interesting that way. And I just want to thank you, Tim, because it's been about a year since we met with you, and you graciously said, you know, I'm going to upgrade the park up there and make it a little, much more exciting. And I think we really appreciate, you know, the effort and everything you put into this. And, you know, special thanks to your staff and our staff, and citizens like Eric Crowsey, who had a lot of input and came to our meetings, and your landscape architect, Steve Brown, did a great-
He needs help, but other than that, we got to-
Don't retire him yet, okay? He's a great guy. So, and then, yeah, of course, I want to thank the mayor and Christina and everybody who came to the meetings to try to get this thing going and make it happen, and thank you for your involvement. You're really going to upgrade, upgrade the entire quadrant of our city up here. You really are. So thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Can you flip back to the, there? So along the inner loop there with the challenge course?
Yes.
Will there be any, like, escape hatches?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just, like, I could never, I don't think I'd get around that thing. And then with the dog park, do you think there will be any drainage issues? Because I know when I've gone to our other dog park, it, there's, it's just wet.
No, and for a couple of reasons. One, it's, that prairie's been there for many, many years. It's built in a way to drain, but as we're lowering it, we're monitoring that. The problem is, we haven't had a good rain to really see it. But if we have to drain it, that's not a problem to do either. There's enough topography to move it.
Do you have the capacity to water it if we were having a significant drought?
Capacity, yeah. Probably willingness, no. And really, it's, some of the core grasses in there are very drought-tolerant grasses. You know, what we're overseeding with are some of the fescues and different grasses that are going to do well in a drought environment.
Is there going to be a little dog area and a big dog area separated?
As it's drawn today, no. And that's come through a little bit of research, that we're seeing the movement in dog parks not to have that. So we've got Walnut Woods Dog Park, which is a fantastic dog park on the southeast side. You very rarely see a single customer in our little dog park. We've got acreage and size there. If it becomes a necessity, it's actually a really easy, and it's lowering a little more grass and making an area. Where we struggle with that is, we don't want to have a little dog area without them being allowed in the woods either, to see how that starts off with.
How big is that dog park that you just referenced, Walnut Woods?
Walnut Woods, the small dark area is-
No, no, not this, I'm talking about, if we're talking about the same one. We discussed this the last time that you were here presenting, and it's several acres, as I recall.
The large dog area is a little over two acres, and the small dog area is about an acre.
I was just trying to-
Yeah.
-imagine in my mind.
The single space here would be our largest dog park by a considerable amount.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you very much, Tim. I just echo John's comments. We really appreciate all your, you and your staff's effort and commitment to our community, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, now we're back to the normal part of citizen comments, portion of the agenda. Did anyone want to make a comment on anything either on or off, or I guess off of the agenda that didn't think to sign in? Okay, we will move ahead, consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove the, I believe there's only two items, the two items that are on the consent agenda?
I don't wish to remove one. I do have a comment about the meeting, and it's just one correction really quick on page 13 of 22, their comments attributed to me, and it's regarding the stone wall adjacent to the turf at Golf Club of Dublin. And the inspectors would have required a railing to be in place. There is no railing in place there. What happened was the grade was lowered, so that the railing would not be required. I just thought that might be important in case somebody goes out there and looks for railing. Thank you.
So you can make that correction. And when, then with that correction, I move that we approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Anne?
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros-Groom?
Yes.
From the postponed items, ordinance 52-17.
Res zoning approximately 2.9 acres from PUD Plan Unit Development District for Oak Park Subarea D to PUD Plan Unit Development District Oak Park Subarea D. Four amendments to the approved development text to permit the conversion of 36 townhomes, townhome units in six buildings to 20 single-family lots within an existing residential development.
Logan? How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
Good evening, members of city council. This ordinance was introduced at the August 14th meeting. During review of the ordinance, council had requested some supplemental information on a couple of topics. These topics were the expiration of the zoning approval, verification of the private alley construction, estimated HOA costs for maintenance, and details regarding the future commercial development. Provided in the memo in your packet this evening is a detailed overview of the code procedures for the zoning expiration for a planned development district, along with analysis as to how this development addresses the three outcomes that are outlined for a city-initiated rezoning. Based on the zoning provision, it is staff's interpretation that this development would not classify for any of the three outcomes that are outlined in our zoning code. The second item was verification of the private alley construction. Provided in the packet as Exhibit A is the approved construction details for all public and private streets and alleys within Oak Park. The document confirms that the construction buildup of the private alleys is identical to that of the public streets. There are two alley types within Oak Park that have a 24-foot and a 20-foot width respectively, and are provided with details on the screen. The third item was estimated HOA maintenance costs for the community based on open space and the private alleys that they're responsible for. During the original rezoning, the developer used the conservation design principles to provide over 50% of open space within the development. The city owns and maintains the majority of that open space, amounting to approximately 28 acres. The remaining plus or minus four acres are maintained by the Master Homeowners Association and include the community center, some interior open spaces, and then the landscape features that are part of Subarea D and part of this rezoning application. Shown on the screen is estimated annual cost for open space maintenance based on the city's contracted standards. This cost would be distributed across the 92 residential units at full buildout, and that's with this rezoning tonight. Additionally, Exhibits B and C were provided in your packet showing both the monthly expense report for Oak Park with itemized expenses and an evaluation done by staff on the condition, timing, and estimated costs of, for repairs for the private alleys. Lastly, council requested the exhibits for the commercial development within Subarea E be provided for reference. Included in the packet under Exhibit D are six documents that depict the layout and architectural style of the commercial subarea. Shown on the left on the screen is the subarea map, with Subarea E being shaded in the reddish-brown color outlined by the thick bold line. And on the right is the development pattern for the community with two L-shaped buildings comprising of all the commercial uses. The next two are, on the left of the screen is the conceptual layout for the entire community, and on the right is a rendering provided at the rezoning from the, looking from the northeast, with the commercial located near the two stormwater ponds you see on the left of that rendering, which is along Highland-Croy Road. The next two slides show the intended architectural character, with the first image providing a rendering at the corner of the main building, which would be near the entrance from Highland-Croy Road, one of the main entrances into the community. And the second image detailing the elevations for the commercial subarea. The east elevation that is shown on the bottom of the screen would front Highland-Croy Road and would frame that main entrance into the community. So based on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 13th meeting, in the applicable review criteria, staff is recommending approval of the request this evening for both the rezoning and preliminary development plan, as noted on the screen, as well as the preliminary and final plat. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions? Tim?
Yeah, I guess the first thing that I'd like to address, might as well just get it out of the way and off my chest, I guess, is with council support, I'd like to ask staff to look at this Section 153.05, 3D4, and, you know, help us with some sort of revision or amendment so that this condition doesn't repeat itself. You know, as I think the history reflects, and those council members that were on council at the time that this rezoning was approved, this doesn't meet the intent of what we were trying to accomplish at the time with respect to the commercial parcel. You know, we have had experience with conflicts between commercial development with residential, literally adjacent, and, you know, this was not what we intended to occur here. So, I'll leave it to you folks, the planners and legal, again with the support of council, so that we don't find ourselves in this kind of position where the construction, the activity on the residential side, you know, saves the commercial developer, so to speak, from having to begin construction activity. So, if that makes sense.
Totally agree. You know, is that enough, Jennifer, to get, with the idea being to try to amend our codes, we've got a little bit more, not just those three options, but maybe one that's actually effective?
That won't reset the clock ticking, will it? That just will be for future applications.
For future applications, correct?
Tend to get put in the box of the residents when commercial comes in much later. That's really the issue. We've had it happen time and again, and we're trying to forestall that.
Exactly. Exactly. And then, if I may, move on to another point.
Go ahead.
With respect to the maintenance of the private alleys and so forth, help me understand, because I guess I, maybe it's just me, the number I saw there just appeared to me to be daunting. So, you know, Logan, I don't know whether you created this or somebody else on staff or where this came from, but this is the Oak Park Alley's Condition Evaluation. And at the bottom of this first page, it says work, crack, sealing and patching, and there's a $10,000 estimate, and then the pavement mill and fill to occur eight to ten years. I'm not sure eight to ten years from when, whether that's today or eight to ten years from the time the streets were installed. But in any event, that number's $120,000. So, help me out with, you know, when the start date is on that, if you can, and then who's paying that $120,000?
I believe that evaluation was based off of the current conditions today. So, that one to two years for the first one, for the crack sealing, that's, that would take place one to two years, tentatively from today, and then the eight to ten years for the other item would be from today. And that's just based off the fact that those alleys that have been constructed out there have had minimal use since that adjacent development hasn't come to fruition. As for the costs, the cost for those alleys is, it is owned and maintained by the Master Homeowners Association. So, with the HOA being in control of that, they would be responsible for paying for the maintenance of those major maintenance items when they do come to fruition.
So, I recall that there was some sort of discussion at the last meeting about whether that, those expenses would be shared potentially by the commercial, the owner of the commercial parcel? Do, I don't recall the answer to that, if there was an answer.
I don't think, what I'm looking at, or what staff has been looking at, is on the plats, those reserves for the private alleys are under ownership of the Master Homeowners Association. So, there's nothing that's detailed in the plat documents that say the commercial area has to provide some funding for the maintenance of those. There are portions of other alleys that fall under, solely under the commercial properties. So, I don't think at this time we have definitive answers to whether or not the commercial subarea would be paying into these most likely. That's something that would have to get worked out between the property owner for the commercial property and the HOA.
But the commercial property owner would have to be utilizing these alleys for access, am I right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I mean, typically, the rezoning stage, we would engage in evaluation, I think, you know, regarding the burden on the HOA. And so, I guess, you know, relative to the number of homes and that sort of thing, so is anybody aware of a neighborhood of this size bearing this kind of, you know, potential burden with respect to roadway maintenance?
Not that I'm aware of off the top of my head. I'd have to do a little bit of research. I can think of some other areas, a little bit larger communities that have smaller private alleys and drives like that, that they're responsible for maintenance of, but not, not like repairable.
Not to scale. I mean, this seems problematic to me. I mean, that's a, that's a relatively big number, obviously, and anyway. Those are my comments at the moment.
I agree, Tim. That's something we have tried to prevent going into a rezoning or a development of a neighborhood, because we realize that that's going to be an undue burden, and then folks are going to come to us for relief, as they have, as many neighborhoods have. And we've agreed, you know, it's crazy, why are we, which is, you know, another argument in favor of, you know, no private streets, which I think we try to, try to work with, but this was a while ago when we, I mean, they exist today and they're private, so I don't know what the answer is.
Any other questions from council?
I just was taking a look at the cost based on the open space maintenance here in conjunction with the cost for the street maintenance and the fencing and the other additional costs for which I have another sheet for, trying to put them all together to determine that if no other homes were built and we were at, still at ninety-two homes, roughly what that cost per home per year would be. It's right around $1,000. And so, it seems like there's very little margin there, should no other homes be built, for those costs, given inflation, to remain viable over time. So, I'm curious to understand if the HOA has a plan to increment the HOA fees throughout the years to accommodate for those rising costs. And that's some of what I've seen in other HOAs, is like, oh, yeah, our plan is at a flat rate, but that doesn't, I mean, inflation will continue to happen over time and over years, and eventually, that rate of inflation outpaces what the homes are bringing in in terms of that maintenance cost. And I think that's some of what ends up happening with street maintenance is, as that inflation outpaces what's being brought in from the homes, is then they're like, well, we can't really afford to do the maintenance on the streets or the maintenance on the fences, or whatever that may be. So, I just, I'm curious to see if there was any foresight or forward thinking on how they might maintain that.
I think the applicant may be able to speak better to that than I can. I know that they've been working, the developer, over the course of the last ten years has been placing HOA funds into a reserve for when it is transferred over to the HOA, because currently, the developer still maintains ownership of that HOA. So, he may be able to provide more information than I can on that.
Do you know what's in the reserve at this time?
I believe it's around $150,000.
That sounds like what I heard.
According to the expense report that was provided in the reserve fund. I believe that's what's been placed today.
Okay.
Is there any community involvement currently with the HOA fund, with the developer? A lot of them, there's a transitory board that sits there, monitors their expenses, sort of plans out what's happening, and that goes on, and then it's turned over and away it runs with pretty good efficiency, because everybody's been trained. Is that what's going on in this particular project?
I don't know if that board's been combined yet. I don't know if that's been built there yet. I think that right now, the developer maintains the sole ownership, and the, I mean, the residents are active, but I don't think they're actively involved with the HOA.
Thank you.
Maybe, Chris, you want to address, unless council wants to get more questions out on the table, go ahead. And if you could comment on the points Ms. Hausman brought up, if you care to.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. With me, I've got Linda Minari, me, I'm H and T, and also Brent Cantrell, who's our construction superintendent. So, between the three of us, hopefully, we can hit all the different points. Let me do the HOA finances first. Sometimes developers will take those HOA fees in and will use them to maintain the subdivision while they still have got ownership of the reserve areas and so forth. My clients are not that kind. All of the money that the residents have been paying in since the first homes were built in two thousand and eight, I think, they were the first ones occupied, that money has been going into the HOA account that hasn't been used, so it's just building up. And the developers continue to pay all of what would have otherwise been the HOA costs in the meantime. So, if we were to turn over the subdivision today, they would find a bank account of $152,000. So, I have no apologies to make about the stewardship of the developer in this case. I mean, that's a pretty exceptional thing to do. We prepared a cost breakdown also, which we gave to staff on the numbers, and they're built based on the actual numbers that we're paying for the landscaping, for instance. That includes, we're paying for the landscaping of the commercial areas, knowing that, and that's, shouldn't be ours, but it is, because you don't want it to look like, not attractive, because we're trying to sell homes out there. But at the end of the day, our numbers indicated that it's around six fifty to seven fifty a year per house to maintain everything. The fences, the snowplowing, the private streets and so forth. We forecasted $32,000 every ten years on maintaining of the private streets, which, you know, we could talk about the numbers and probably could be done more efficiently in the private sector. We've used numbers that came off other projects that my clients have got. So, it appears to me for houses that are in the half-million dollar range that this HOA burden is pretty small on a monthly basis, and the rewards are going to be significant over time. And it doesn't seem there's any reason, obviously, they can raise that $96 a month if they need to out in the future. At this point in time, the HOA is solely my client, and that's typical. The developer does not relinquish control of the subdivision until the last house is sold.
Excuse me, Chris, I'm really sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
The HOA fees and the expenses or the burden that it's to support, did that include the maintenance of these private alleys? Is that, is that part of the equation?
The, it will be. At this point in time, there's been no maintenance.
Right.
Of either the public or the private streets. Now, there is one point that I'd like to, the residents, Ms. Hausman sort of made a mistake here. Those private streets are already the responsibility of the HOA. We're not doing anything new here. So, if we don't pass tonight, or whenever we vote, I'm not sure about the schedule, then the seventy-two existing lots have the responsibility for those private streets. And that's the way it was zoned, and that's the way it was done with the commercial. So, that obligation is already there. And the only thing that can be done to impact that obligation is to add more lots to the twenty that we're proposing here tonight, so that instead of seventy-two homes, there would be ninety-two homes that carry that, carry that load.
Okay.
And it seems to me some confusion about what is being done tonight. We are not changing any of that zoning that is in place. All of the streets are in. I wasn't here to make those decisions. I was called up, same time Dana was called up. I went to Iceland, he went to Iraq. I think, maybe I got the better, better part of the deal on that. But the, my fingerprints are not on the, not on the zoning. It's, so I'm dealing with what is there, just as everybody else is today.
Is there, would the commercial development, if and when it ever comes, would it participate in the HOA?
What should happen and there is not, could you get me a graphic up there? Give me the color one that shows with the, with the homes, the new homes drawn in?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm going to have to draw a picture. I had a lost school professor that, he'd always draw pictures. And I thought, my God, what am I going to do? It was evidence when I get into court, and I say objection, judge says, well, state your basis. And I say, well, I can't explain it to you, I could draw a picture, it'd be all right. This is very helpful graphic. This is what is being proposed here tonight. They're already drawn in, and that's to show you also the way that those homes fit into the scale of the existing subdivision. This private road down here, if I can hold it steady, is owned by the commercial developer. That's a reserve. And then this one, in this cul-de-sac, or whatever it is, I haven't figured out whether they're, this private street, this private street, and this private street are owned by the Oak Park Residential HOA. So...
Don't they all, but the commercial?
Pardon?
They all are adjacent to the commercial?
Yes.
And why wouldn't the commercial participate?
I think it should.
Yeah?
I'm just saying that there was not any agreement that was worked out in advance of the contract basis. But, I mean, you know, we could certainly say, okay, commercial, you no longer have access to these alleys. I mean, I don't know what the city would say to that, but that would give us significant leverage for getting the commercial to pony up, because, I mean, obviously, the bulk of use of those alleys, and the reason they were done as alleys was for the commercial, not for the residential.
Well, excuse me, I guess, maybe, I mean, if the HOA is responsible, solely responsible for maintaining the alleys, could they restrict access?
I, I mean, we would have to, I don't think that they could do that, but the commercial part will have to come in for a final development plan review, and so, there will be the opportunity, when that comes in, to look at how it's laid out, the traffic it's generating, you know, make those kind of inquiries when we see what the development is that actually comes in. But if that's, if they were to restrict in any way the commercial developers, that's completely private.
We did look at the possibility of, when we did this, because if we had those alleys and we can incorporate them into our residential, this new development we're proposing, we'd have typical, normally, normal depth lots. But we thought, well, nice idea, but we don't think we can get away with that. So, we figured that the plan is, that has been approved and rezoned by the city is what we have to deal with, and that's what we've got here tonight.
Okay, you were, or we were asked to consider three things by the lady that spoke earlier, and she spoke of these four lots that would be located right here. It looks, you know, it looks like we have a density there that might be, might be outpacing the balance of the density. Can you speak as to why the...
All, Ms. Grooms, all of the lots are of the same standard. Actually, they're, they're a minimum standard of fifty-five feet wide. Most of them are wider than that. All of the lots that are in the village homes that surround us here are fifty-five-foot wide standard. So, we have exactly the same standard as the village lots. Now, we were asked to eliminate two lots. My client said, we're going from thirty-six to twenty. This is already, hurts too bad. Question as to whether or not we should even do that. There's no more give. But Planning Commission said, you know, the fact there were two reserves on either side here, and they're like little parquettes, and Planning Commission said, you know, what can we do? And so, we tabled and came back and got what I think is a really nice plan that reduced all of these lots to fifty-five feet, that freed up that, the extra space, because each one of them was five or six feet wider than that. We took that amount, we created a new reserve, we used setbacks creatively, and then we also took away four parking spaces that the commercial didn't need, but were there to increase the, somehow, they were supposed to increase the mixed-use ambiance in the community to have on-street parking in front of, adjacent to those houses on that boulevard. We left it, we didn't put those spaces in, that gave us another nine feet. So, all of those techniques, and Linda Minari is the one that's responsible for doing that magic, allowed us to do a really nice landscape entry feature there, and you should have that in your, in your materials. And we felt like we were very successful with that, and Planning Commission apparently did too, because they, because they approved it. But no, we can't give up, there's any more lots.
Mr. Klein?
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had a quick question. We're looking at these fifty-five-foot single-family, but the fact, weren't we in the past looking at townhomes on that area?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the neighbors, in effect, bought with something, in my view, they're getting a significant upgrade with, you know, having the single-family lots pretty much mimicking what exists there versus the townhomes that were surrounding commercial that's never going to be there. I mean, it seems like we've made the best of a questionable situation.
Well, as you might imagine, Ms. Bailey, I agree with what you say, and I don't understand why the residents look at this the way that they do. Those townhomes had a zero-foot setback.
Right.
They were three stories tall. They were towering. I mean, they would look pretty because of the architecture, but they were, you know, this is like so far preferable for the residents' interests compared to the townhomes being there. And they were, they were twenty-two feet wide, the lots were twenty-two feet wide, they were stacked up, and the, because they were supposed to be a screen. And that's one of the reasons we're here tonight. We were never able to do anything with those townhomes, because, you know, staff appropriately said, well, you can't do anything with the townhomes, because when the commercial's built, then the screen needs to be there. We finally got to a point where we could not, we're running out of residential lots, we're going to go dark. And so, everybody, the city and the residents, were going to be looking across empty townhome lots, as well as the empty commercial lots. That wasn't going to be that great. So, we did what we could do with the hundred and four feet of depth of the townhome lots, and they're, we call them villas, they're sort of like patio homes, they do have a short yard or a space in the middle for outdoor living, but they're very similar to the price range, you know, pull a number of around four fifty out as the average. Planning Commission was very clear to us that they wanted to see the same type of homes, same quality, and the same value. And so, we have done that. We've got six approved architectural models. One of the painful things about this subdivision is that if you look through your plans, you'll see that all the arc- see that all the architecture was included with the zoning. And so staff has like held our feet to the fire over the years of saying, you've got, you can't make any changes because here's the picture. And so it's been very, very challenging, very expensive for us, but we've soldiered on. But moving forward, we have six models, which actually translates into more than that because we can do mirror images to work with diversity and so forth, that have, in fact, already been approved as being appropriate by the Planning Commission. And the text allows the staff to work with us to create more, should we get into the difficult but desirable problem of running into a diversity issue. And the last thing, Ms. Grooms, did I address you correctly?
You did, and I just want to make a point. This is why I've always loved the idea of a pattern book for a neighborhood, because we've had rezonings recently where, you know, we have a developer that's gonna bring houses, and we really don't have too much to say about what they're gonna look like. And this neighborhood, you know, with planning holding our feet to the fire and with the very detailed plans that we had, we're able to get, you know, some really excellent architecture and building materials and quality that we wouldn't expect otherwise and that aren't, you know, aren't found elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Grooms, I can go, there was the one point about the look and feel of the subdivision. I just don't understand that. Some of the residents said, they said, look at the, I think it's Dominion Project to the north of us, said, why can't you build homes like that with those nice big lots? And we tried to explain to them at great length unsuccessfully, this isn't that kind of a subdivision. As indicated, it was planned as, when the first cut was taken at this, it was a, the conservation design was what Dublin was doing. And that's why we got 50% open space, you got the smaller lots, the larger houses surrounded by this massive amount of open space. And so that is the shtick of this subdivision. That's, you know, that's how it was envisioned, and we need to carry through with that. And so we've got the same type of houses, the same width lots, the same look and feel as to what is already there. Now, one of the other things the residents had brought up before Planning Commission, the townhome setback was zero feet. We came in at six feet. And so staff said, because we're getting this objection, and the residents wanted 20 feet. And we said, well, like, there's not 20 feet there. We only got 104 feet to work with, and if we're gonna have, fulfill this imperative of having the same quality of homes and the same price ranges and be able to market those, we've gotta, we just can't give you any more setback than this. We went from six to nine, and that was, that hurt a lot because it took away a washer or dryer. We gotta find someplace else to do that. But that, that combined with the standard 55-foot lot width for the village homes that surround us, you know, I just can't look at this and say, it's not, it's just, it's not any different from what is there already. But that's normal. People always want more than what they've got already. And so I understand that part of it. I've been doing this business long enough. But I mean, I just don't think it's a, it's a fair criticism.
What about this pile of dirt? Who's pile of dirt?
It is on a city-owned reserve. It is the construction dirt as the, as the homes or the foundations are dug. One of the other issues that has not come to you yet, but it may in fact be in your CIP, because we worked with Fred Hahn to try and find a place for there to be an active play space in this neighborhood. And it's really not a place for the kids to play ball or fly heights or, you know, play soccer and so forth. And that's the most likely place that it would be. And so the dirt will, one way or the other, will be, you know, will go away.
Where is it? Where is it on the...
It's way back in this corner back here, right there.
I was gonna say, yeah. I've walked the westernmost reserve where the large tree is in the center, and I didn't see it there, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, no, it's not pretty, but it's not exactly, as you come into the subdivision, you're gonna have to go all the way back in the corner to...
And it'll be rectified eventually.
At some point, it'll go away.
It'll be, it'll be gone. There's no question about that. And then, just to give you that there's always another side to these stories, people that are adjacent to that don't want that to be the active play area. And so we're not getting arguments from that quarter. But that's the only natural place for it to go, where there's enough room. And I don't know whether it's, whether it's openly programmed in the parks budget or whether it's just in their, in their future, in their future planning, but that was five-year out.
So you say that that city's, that pile is the city's pile, or it's on the city's property? And it's the developer's pile?
It's, we own the dirt. There's no question about that. It's our responsibility to take care of it eventually.
Okay.
Solicitor, here's a suggestion for you. We didn't get into this in the previous discussion with Metro Parks. They need a dirt for a pump track, which is the next phase of this exciting outdoor world they're creating up here. And...
I feel like Mary's made in heaven.
He's got some dirt to move.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, it's a curvilinear, up-and-down type of thing for mountain biking and stuff. So if you could get ahold of Tim and talk to him about moving that dirt out of there and putting it to something useful instead of paying to haul it, you might look into that.
We'll explore that right away, John. And if someone can give me his contact info, just email with Tim tomorrow, I will do that tomorrow.
Now, I got another question for you, related to this rather grandiose and beautiful commercial district. So, did you say this is the end of this part of the project for you guys? Is that what I understood, or did I misunderstand that?
No, and I don't want to be heavy about that part of it, Tom, but we're about, just about out of the single-family lots. There are 72 total, we're down to like eight left uncommitted at this point in time. And so we've been going through about two a month with the current state of the economy. And so we're looking and seeing there's gonna be an end to this. And so we need to move forward and do something with the commercial. My client is a Division of Atlantic Real Estate Development, a really big company in New Jersey. They have no other presence in central Ohio. I don't know whether they will after this project is done. But it hadn't been all that profitable. The things that you love, they aren't very thrilled about, the four-sided materials as well as the four-sided architecture. We put, we had to put as much stone on the back of the house and the sides as we put on the front. I mean, that's the kind of commitments that were made. But, I'm sorry, your commercials was...
So my, I guess my question is, I look at this commercial strip, and it's Disney-esque, and it's...
I'd describe it as Mary Poppins-ish.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's rather attractive, and it'd be a lovely amenity for all the people living there, and maybe other people would come in and go to all these wonderful buildings. But architecturally, they're really extravagant, okay? Wonderful towers, beautifully detailed, and interesting capstones on the pilasters for the entryway, signage cut out of metal. So let me ask you this. So what guarantees, if we let you finish up all this residential stuff, and now we're getting into the heavy lifting, the commercial, who's gonna lease these shops, who's gonna, you know, what guarantees do we have that you're gonna go to this level to develop this kind of beautiful commercial area for these residents?
Well, we have no ownership whatsoever in the commercial. When, to give you a quick bit of history here, when, 2005, when the negotiations for Oak Park began, it was about 61 acres of farmland. And it was owned by a partnership of three people, and one of them is a central Ohio developer, I won't use names here right now. And the, part of the deal to buy that land for the residential, all my clients wanted to do was residential, was that the partnership would retain three acres, actually it's 3.2 or 3.3, for the commercial development. And I thought the city would never approve that, told my client so, and surprisingly, while I was gone, they did. So we have no relationship with them, except they, we have a mortgage on that land. My client, Oak Park Dublin LLC, has a mortgage for 1.8 million plus whatever has built up in the last, since 2006, 2007, when the infrastructure was put in. And that, because that commercial has not paid for its share of the infrastructure for Oak Park. Planning Commission, when we took this back, took this to them, the staff asked us to go in and see if they could help us solve this problem. And Planning Commission said, would you please make every effort to acquire that commercial land? Which we would have loved to do. We were willing to just cancel that debt in return for getting control of the commercial land, and then we could have done a better project than this. I'll be honest, it would have been a better project because it would have been 55 by 100, 125, 130-foot deep lots. Even with the levers that we had, we were not able to get control of that land. So this is what we can do with what we've got to do.
So really, there's really, since they own it, and they're a separate legal entity, and although you included all these really nice graphics in the package you gave us, we're really, there's no assurance in the future that any of this is gonna get built?
No, they don't, it's, they don't.
There just isn't any. Next guy might come in with a track shopping center.
If, John, if...
Whoever buys it.
That's what worries me.
If the final development plan, if they came in with something that didn't comply with those pictures, then Planning Commission wouldn't approve it. So that's the ultimate, they can't just come in and build, they've gotta get final development plan approval, but we have no way of compelling the filing of that.
Yeah, looking at, looking at the complexity of the architecture and its materials, I find it hard that somebody could actually build this and put shops in there that you can generate cash flow from. I mean, because the detailing is really nice. I mean...
We've, we've heard through the developers' gossip that the cost of doing that plan makes it pretty much prohibitive, particularly now that, don't forget, in 2005, 2006, when this was envisioned, the world was very different out here in the Northwest. Now we got a lot of retail going in up at the Drum Village, we've got everything down in the Costco, you've got Pyle and Croy, I won't say that very loudly, but just mention that fact. So the, and you've got this horrendous amount of cost, and it is gonna be very expensive, even if anybody could actually do it. It's 200 feet back from the road, the signage is very limited. So even with the broad swath of commercial uses in there, 40,000 square feet is allowable, we just don't think from a business standpoint it's ever gonna happen. And it hasn't happened in the last 10 years.
Really, that's to my point, looking at the drawings, that's, you know, so what's gonna happen to this parcel? It's gonna sit there, is it gonna come back as a rezoning for residential?
One of the, one of the things that we did, John, was that we presented three plans to the Planning Commission. One of them was the best-case scenario with the 55 by 130 lots. The second one is the one that's here before you tonight. The third one is a plan for that commercial as to how it could develop with the same product that you see here this evening. It would produce 12 lots. So you could continue with the same, same plan that we have done here tonight. I'm sure that a commercial developer would not be very thrilled about having to do that. But there's gonna be a day of reckoning for that, for that mortgage that is owed at some point in time also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
There's one other thing I did want to mention, and Linda just blew in my ear a few minutes ago, that these, in addition to bringing this new landscape area to, in there, at this point where the park, they call them parquetts. There were just a few trees and a little 20-foot square paved area. And that was, quite frankly, I think to get over that required 50% open space. There's a number of little park areas here that were acclimated to get, aggregated to get that. The other thing that we have done is we have taken one of our lots, one of our homes that is already rear-loaded, it's called the Ashbourne, and it's really nice. Do you have those, the pictures I sent over? And I passed them around here. And those will, and the text requires this now, the staff, we were gonna do it, and then staff said, we want to make it a requirement. We've got this two versions of this Ashbourne, which is really a nice, nice house, and they're, they'll be mirror-imaged on either side of that. So you'll have that landscape park area in the middle, and then you'll have, this house will, will be, with the turret, will face to the inside of the boulevard. And one that is a mirror image on the other corner will face the other direction. And go, can you go forward, and they have this side, that'll be facing the Park Boulevard. And go ahead and through the, I think there's several more. That's what the other corner would look like. And then again, that's the, the open area, the porch that will overlook the Park Boulevard, and that's the rear view. So, you know, putting all those things together, we think that we've done a real good job of that, of that corner. Is there anything else that I should...
Jennifer, can we condition the relocation of the soil off of that parcel as part of this development plan?
Yes.
I would like to add that condition, that that soil be relocated. It doesn't matter to me where it goes, as long as it goes away.
What kind, what kind of a timeframe are you gonna put on that, Ms. Grooms?
Prior to building permit?
Midnight tonight.
Prior to building permit? Or, or what? Help me out, you got a suggestion?
We gotta get the dirt out of there.
60 days?
30 days?
30 days?
I'd like the first building permit of this, this project better.
Okay, when do you expect that to be? When do you expect that to be?
Well, obviously, we've gotta get approved. We've got 30 days to go from there. We might, when will we be able to put a shovel on the dirt? So I meant about starting pulling a building permit. Can you, are you willing to move that dirt?
60, I'm hearing 60.
So we're looking at 60 days?
60 days? Can you get the dirt out of there within 60 days?
Well, you don't wanna make it in 60 days because they're gonna mud the whole place up if they do it. That's gonna be November. And I don't think, we want them hauling mud out of there. 30 days, we'll get it out of there before it gets real dry.
I'd like to explore this Metro Parks thing. I don't know what their timing is.
Why don't you say that's by, you know, by April 1st or 3rd or something?
Yeah, I don't think...
Give them the chance to work with the Metro Park and, you know, whatever it is, it's objectionable.
Whatever it is, it's objectionable about that dirt pile, probably in the dead of winter, it's not gonna be, she mentioned weeds and insects, and that all stops. I really am intrigued by the idea of having it at the Metro Park and maybe pushing that...
Okay, building permit then.
Well, Metro Parks hasn't completed their plan for their pump. They actually don't, in-house cannot design that, because I've been working with them. And they said they have to do an outside contract to do that. So we have to give them a little more time, so they get the plan put together to figure out what they're gonna do.
If you were to say April 1st, unless we need to make that longer for Metro Parks...
Yeah, they're gonna use an outside consultant to design this.
April 1st, how about April 1st? Will you have the dirt moved by April 1st?
That's...
Okay, and then who is it incumbent upon to grade and seed the area where said, it's their responsibility?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe project completion by April 1st. Haul it away, grade it. I don't, what I don't want you to do is haul the dirt away and then just leave a mud hole there with tire ruts and everything else for impertunity. So I'd like a timeline for the whole thing to be finished, so. Let's haul the soil away, we'll grade and seed it by, seeding season will be over around May 1st. So, May 1st, soil hauled away, everything graded and seeded, we'll get good seed germination last few weeks of April, and then we should be ready for next summer.
That's a deal.
I'd like to add that condition to the approval.
And we accept that.
Okay, I know there were a few other residents, nobody signed in. I'm assuming nobody wants to make a comment. Okay, I make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plots with that one amendment to the date regarding the pile of dirt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Second reading public hearing, ordinance is ordinance 50-17, Ann? You're done?
Okay, we're gonna do the plots or no?
You've gotta do the plot.
Actually, that was a motion on the plots.
The motion was for preliminary, we need to go down separately?
The rezoning separately?
Oh, okay. Then I make a motion to approve the preliminary and final plots.
I'll second.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amherose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Adopting the five-year capital improvements plan.
No change, we provided you an update memo at your last meeting, and no change since then unless you have questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none, Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Moving on in the agenda, I move to waive the council rules of order to address ordinances 60-17, 61-17, and 62-17 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
And Ann, can you read those titles?
All right, title, uh, ordinance 60-17, determining to proceed with acquisition, construction, and improvements of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency. 61-17 is levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency. And 62 is authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, France Investments LLC, and the Columbus Franklin County Finance, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, and France Investments LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvements projects and declaring an emergency.
Dana?
No change to these from the last-
Any questions from council?
I just wanted to reiterate the emergency legislation, that there isn't any financial commitment by the city on this. I know Mike brought up on our last one that there was a $1,000 energy audit, but it's, it was my understanding that that $1,000 was part of the study for the, for the-
For the assessment?
Legacy office park space study that we did.
Correct.
So that is not tied to this, that is independent. So there is no financial commitment of property finances or anything on behalf of the city other than an endorsement that this district could exist so these people could secure financing.
Correct.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we treat ordinances 60, 61, and 62-17 as emergencies. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ann, on the ordinance?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Salee?
And Dana, with this, can you just explain who the people we're appointing here? You appoint a person to the board and-
Oh yes, thank you for the follow-up on that. So I'm required to make one appointment, that person has to have an economic development background, so I appointed Jeremiah Gracia. The other appointment is to be made by city council, not required that you have any particular background like that, so it's subject to whether perhaps one of you or some member of the public, I'm recommending Colleen Gilger, Director of Economic Development. I think these meetings will, will occur about quarterly. My recommendation is Colleen, only if someone else doesn't want to do that.
The decisions that they'll be required to make are based on, on what?
I think they're primarily reviewing these types of submissions as they come on a regional basis, and then they'll just manage the pace area as designated going forward.
In this pace area, in this case, is just one parcel, correct? So, but it could expand?
It could expand over time. In fact, you know, part of our programming with economic development is to provide ongoing assessments like this for some of the building owners in that area so that we can then try to create a pipeline of these type of investments while the money's available through the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority.
Thank you.
Anybody from council want to volunteer for that role? Hearing no volunteers, I make a motion that we appoint Colleen Gilger to the ESID board.
I'll second.
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilbert missed a meeting, is she here?
She's in, her and Jeremiah both are in Japan, which is why they got appointed.
I was going to say, that, that used to be that way in our neighborhood association. If you missed a meeting, you got appointed, so.
We are, no objection.
Wish they'd go more often.
Okay, first reading ordinance is ordinance 59-17, Ann?
Res zoning approximately 2.4 acres from BSDP, Bridge Street District Public, to BSDHT, Bridge Street District Historic Transition for two lots at the northwest corner of the intersection North High Street and North, North Street for the downtown Dublin parking garage and the Dublin branch of the Columbus Metropolitan Library.
Introduce it. Thank you, Tim. Jenny?
Hi. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and members, members of council. As you said, this is ordinance 59-17, which is a proposed rezoning for the parcels associated or created for the Columbus Metropolitan Library and the downtown Dublin parking garage. The site is located on the east side of North High Street, north of North Street. And the proposal, as you read, shows the existing zoning here in green, and then that will be changed then, or is recommended for rezoning to Bridge Street Historic Transition. In terms of a little bit of background, the two parcels that we are, that are proposed for rezoning will be, will contain the new library and, and the garage. And those were created as part of the plat that council approved at their last meeting. This is part of, one of the provisions in the development agreement between the city and the library to rezone these parcels to historic transition to allow for some flexibility in uses should there be future redevelopment of the library parcel. There is no difference in terms of the library and the garage being permitted in the current district and in the future district, they're both, it would be permitted in both instances. The historic transition just opens it up a little bit more to some additional commercial uses should that be desired in the future. And based on review by planning, as well as our various boards, found that this is consistent with the community plan as well. So with the criteria used to evaluate these projects, we found that that, those all three were met related to the future land use designation, the area plan for the historic district and Bridge Street, and then the thoroughfare plan. So this was reviewed by ART, the Architecture Review Board, and Planning Commission as the code requires. They all are recommending approval to council with no conditions.
Questions from council?
I'm sorry, at the second, yes, at the second reading, which is at your next reading, I'm sorry, that was my oversight, yes.
A second reading at the September 25th council meeting, are there any questions this evening? None? Okay. Ordinance 63-17?
Accepting the annexation petition for 2.9 more or less acres from Washington Township to the city of Dublin.
Introduce it. Thanks, Tim. Jennifer?
Good evening, council members. On April 26th, Aaron Underhill's agent for the petitioners filed this annexation petition with the Franklin County Commissioners. The petition was filed as an expedited type 2 annexation. Under this process, the city must pass a resolution relating to municipal services and also a resolution relating to land uses and zoning buffers. City council passed those resolutions on May 8th of this year. The Franklin County Commissioners granted the annexation on May 30th, finding that all the Ohio revised code requirements were met. This property is within the proposed annexation areas, the community plan, and it is in the exclusive Dublin service area. Upon annexation, properties are typically automatically rezoned to the R rural district. However, this site is located in the Innovation District and will be automatically zoned to the ID4 district. This would allow multifamily uses up to 10 units per acre, as well as office and research and development uses. The property is an island surrounded on three sides by property within the Dublin corporate limits. In keeping with the city's policy to eliminate township islands, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 63-17 at the second reading on September 25th, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Do we have any idea of the uses they're going to be looking for on this parcel?
So this was part of a development that was, is in concept stage with Kaufman Development. It's multifamily, I believe, 130 single-family units, and then 202 multifamily units. That received at least two informal reviews at Planning Commission, but I don't know if there's been any progress on that to date.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay, we'll see that issue back at our September 25th council meeting. Public hearing on resolutions, resolution 66-17, Ann?
Resolution intent to appropriate a 0.2336 acre V simple right-of-way and a 0.0141 acre temporary construction easement from Brian Cunningham and Corinne Cunningham, located at 7515 Plain City Road for the public purpose of constructing roadway improvements.
Dana? Introduce it. Thanks, Tim. Jen?
I'm actually going to take this. Dublin, Franklin County, and Union County are working together. We've had several discussions about the roundabout, the interac, intersection of State Route 161 Post Road and Cos Gray Road. Dublin is the main point of conduct regarding acquisition, but Union County is responsible for the costs of acquisition. As council knows, acquisition from multiple, multiple property owners is necessary for this project. The present resolution for the acquisition was not included in the original group of resolutions for the project that council recently considered because we had come to preliminary agreement with the Cunninghams to acquire the property interest for the appraised value. Recently, however, the mortgage holder objected to the city's acquisition and would not execute a mortgage release. As a result, the city must proceed with the acquisition process. We're still hopeful that an amicable resolution will be reached. However, this legislation begins the eminent domain process if those negotiations are unsuccessful. Staff recommends approval of resolution 66-17 tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
The mortgage holder, is that the lender?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't want to release a portion of this property, feeling that it devalues the balance?
I don't know what, the, the mortgage holder is Durrock Trust, which is a property owner of several other parcels that we were, will be acquiring, and they are also contesting those, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Vice Mayor Reiner? Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
And Ms. Saludo?
Yes.
Other, under the other portion of the agenda, development, site plan review, Columbus Metropolitan Library, Dublin branch.
Good evening. This is the development plan and site plan review for the Columbus Metropolitan Library, the Dublin branch. So this particular site that we're reviewing tonight is one of the parcels that we discussed as part of the rezoning, specifically for the library, which is located right at the intersection of North Street and North High Street. A little background, just to refresh everybody's memory, the basic plan was approved by council in April, and council was designated as the required reviewing body for all subsequent applications. As part of that approval, there was a condition for the creation of a committee to work on the development of the signature transition element, which happened then, in the design of that, and options presented to council over June and July of this year, with then culminating in the submission of this development plan and site plan here in August. And ART has reviewed that thoroughly and made recommendations, which I'll go over here and then before you tonight, with two, two motions required, one for waivers and one for development plan and site plan with conditions. As you recall, here's an overview of the site, showing the library building in the northeast corner of the building with then the public plaza space shown then south of the building, and as part of that incorporated the signature transition element. And I have some graphics for that as well to show how that was incorporated in the overall design, still maintaining that garden space between the library and the garage, as well as then access around the site and the roadway improvements that are occurring as part of these projects as well. So in terms of site plan review and ART's recommendation, your memo includes a really detailed analysis of those, but a quick summary of those. Waivers include, and conditions relate to mechanicals located along the rights of way, related to accessing them and screening. So we have some waivers related to that, in addition to a condition to make sure that those are screened as, as appropriately as they can be. Given the design of the site, waivers are required for gateway features that would be required here at the intersection of Rock Crest and North High Street, as well as then a potential for a terminal vista here at the end of North Street as it terminates. Given the design of the site, ART felt that that was not appropriate to require those elements. In addition, we have a condition and a waiver related to foundation plantings to allow some flexibility to, to be provided in terms of the plant material that's required. It's a waiver to waive some of those requirement, but a condition to try to meet that as closely as possible while allowing some flexibility. In terms of other conditions, site photometrics, things that we would require as part of the building permit, we had some discussion as well related to the loading zone and stacking to ensure that trucks are not stacking into rock crests as they're needed to access that loading zone, as well as making sure that the tree diversity requirements are met as part of their building permit review as well. This just shows then one of the renderings for the building, so you can see the building materials, and then those are also actually on the table in front of you, show the final selection of materials, including the stone, which was discussed as part of the basic plan that has been incorporated as part of the submission.
Ms. Ross?
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You go back to that previous rendering. See how in that rendering, it looks like the, the wall, the glass and, and wall there is slanted up?
Mm-hmm.
And then here, I'm noticing in the model, it's a straight up and down, which is-
Right here?
There, and then up, as you go up, like, up, up, up a little bit? Yeah, this looks like it's a slanted.
Yeah, they're west-facing.
The east-
Or east-facing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the east-facing glass there.
Looks like it has an angle to it.
Thank you.
And the model doesn't.
It does have some, some, this is fairly flat, but then under here, this, this should-
I think she means the roof line, Jenny, like this.
Yeah.
That that point comes up to a higher than a 45-degree angle.
Not 90 degrees at the corner. Is this corner-
It's a square, right here?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Yeah, the model is accurate, yes. It's just the way you're looking at it in this picture, I think.
So it is 90 degrees?
Yes.
Darn, okay, thanks.
Sorry. So then this shows, the renderings, as you're moving further south on High Street, this shows then how the signature transition element that council had seen as one of their option has been incorporated, that, that show portions or remnants of the previous school building that had been there. So you're seeing that here at this staircase, as well as then the ramp, and then you'll see some elements of that at the corner that have window details that match then what the school previous design looked like as well. In terms of waivers to the elevations, related to story articulation and what the code would require, as well as the vertical increments, so based on the design of the building, some of those requirements would not be met the way the materials are applied. And ART felt that was appropriate in addition to primary materials and how those are applied to the buildings. They're, they're very close on primary materials, but not quite, quite there. So waivers required for that. Similarly, then, on the north and south elevations, with some addition to the wall heights that the code requires for the signature transition element, and some of the retaining walls required to make the grade work on the site, additional waivers are needed for that. So with that, ART has reviewed this project and is recommending approval of 13 waivers that are outlined here, as well as in your report, and then a recommendation of approval for the development plan and site plan with the five conditions listed on the screen, as well as in your memo. And the applicant is available to answer questions, and they have a presentation, and I'm available as well.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yes, thank you. With respect to waiver number nine, the ground-mounted mechanical equipment, and the requirement is to fully screen it, and it's proposed to be partially screened. Could, could you elaborate on that?
Sure.
Where, where it is and why it can't be fully screened? Please.
Yeah, trying to find the best site plan that's probably easier to explain from. So the code would require along, so there's a bank of utilities, some that exist today, actually, on North Street, that have screening but need to be provided access, as well as then utilities located here adjacent to the loading zone. So there was a lot of discussion at ART about how to screen those appropriately. So the condition is related to the one on Rock Crest, making sure the previous plan the staff reviewed showed no screening along Rock Crest Parkway. So the condition is that the screening will be on Rock Crest with then limited screening being along the side elevation here, because you'll have some screening with this loading zone wall.
So, so waiver number nine speaks to the, to the north side?
Yes, it does actually, and it does speak to this as well, because there are, AEP requires access to, to these mechanicals.
And those are existing, right?
Right, there are some new ones in there, but there, a large number of them are existing. So those have to be accessed from that right-of-way.
And, okay, but the one to the north, is, is that an access issue as well?
Yes, they will have to be provided access. So when we were looking at which of the four sides, or excuse me, three sides, because it would be the Rock Crest and then the east and west side, we would, ART's preference was that Rock Crest be screened.[1752.05]
Got it, got it, thank you.
Jenny, throughout the district, we've got lots of utility boxes that are necessary. Most urban areas vault these mechanicals. Why are these not vaulted?
Do you know the answer to? I don't know if I have, I don't, I don't have the answer to that yet.
Is there a reason they cannot be vaulted?
My guess is because of the depth to bedrock there and trying to make those mechanicals fit in there, but I don't know about in terms of the ones that are existing, what constraints are related to this one. Again, that's AEP and some of those as well.
We're certainly going to have bedrock issues throughout the district.
That's true.
I don't know that that's a compelling reason for all of these to be surface-mounted and unable to be screened in an urban setting. You know, if you were not in an urban setting, it might be different, but...
Right.
We can ask the applicant then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jen? Okay, I am again going to call an audible, and I'm going to call a timeout. We again have a Kaufman government class here, I think half the high schools here. They had to stay till 8:30, so I'm going to be very popular. I'm going to call a five-minute break and let them exit, and we will resume in five minutes.
I was done, so I think the applicant has some things and then, okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to introduce our design team as we seek final approval for the development plan and site plan of the new Dublin Branch Library. We're pleased that the final plan for the garage was approved at your last meeting, and we felt all along that this is a really important library and municipal project as our model depicts in front of you. We've just completed the design development phase of our project, and so from a costing perspective, I want to make sure you know where we stand today. Library funds devoted for this project are at 18.6 million, and our fundraising effort today is pegged at 2.3 million. We also currently have about a $1.1 million gap that we're working to reduce through value management and value engineering, seeking ways to close that gap, and we're hopeful that we're going to be able to do it. We're working with the Dublin Community Foundation and identifying community leaders who will help us with the fundraising effort. Pretty encouraged to date of those who have stepped forward to offer to help, and while we're in the quiet phase right now, we think that will become more visible and vocal in the months ahead. Should we have additional difficulty in budget pressures, we'll return to council with options to reduce costs, but we're going to do everything in our power to avoid that scenario. We were all pleased by the reaction to the signature transition element, and I want to take a moment to publicly thank the committee. Spent four or five meetings and much time deliberating and coming up with what we think is a great solution. We'll remind you that the estimate to date for the signature transition element is 210,000, and that remains unfunded and above and beyond the fundraising goals of the library. We are facing additional market pressures, so we're eager to move ahead. As you all know, it's an aggressive building market right now with the airport, the jail, Nationwide Children's Hospital, OSU, and many others. We do have noticed very recent from our suppliers and contractor that due to the hurricanes, Harvey and Irma, we should expect additional price increases. Finally, I would say that we are in the, what we hope are the final stages of identifying the temporary site for the Dublin Branch Library, so that we will remain operational through most of the time that this project is occurring. We hope to be out of the building by December, and coordinated with Turner Construction on their work with the garage, we would anticipate some of our construction beginning in February or March. So walking through the presentation tonight will be Mike Soriano and Tony Murray of NBBJ, and we look forward to your comments and hopefully for your approval of our final development and site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm Mike Soriano, design architect for this branch from NBBJ. So Jenny was able to touch on a lot of what we were going to say from the architectural side, so I will try and keep this brief from our end. Just understanding where we are, so we're at 100% DD, it's been submitted. Cost estimating's been in progress, as Pat was stating, looking for demolition in December of 2017, and for potential branch opening in targeting summer of 2019. Last time, when we came for basic site plan and some of the commentary that we heard from council was that, from the prior iteration, that wanted us to look at the integration of stone as a material for the project, wanted us to work with the council-appointed committee for the historic transitional element, which we've done, which is a very positive process, and also to develop more of the site materials and details in and around the project. One thing to point out for architectural design is for it, at the point at which we're in the process, we're through design development, and we'll, you know, move into CDs upon approval. And during that phase, we're, design is, design development is pretty well firm, and it's, you know, the intent is there. And then through construction documents, we'll be working through details, detail-level modifications or changes as, as things come up. So as shown before, this is the, the current iteration of the project, and I do, I want to point out just a few things from basic site plan that are different, because there are a few. In terms of the overall strategy, if you'll remember that we have a lot of bedrock on the site, so our, our strategy has been to have a light footprint at, this is High Street and Rock Cress, so this is kind of our lowest elevation you can see on the model. So just for a point of clarification, the model on the table in front of you and the images that you're seeing are the same thing. There's no difference between the two. So I'm glad you had the question about the, the angle of the roof, so that is flat, it's just the vantage at which you are. So the strategy has been that we keep the heavier rusticated materials at the base and draw from the surrounding context, keep a really open and transparent first level and, and right off of the garage and off of the street, so that you can see in, see out, so the library becomes an active participant in the, in the urban streetscape, and then create a lighter volume at the top that really kind of floats above, above the, the project and creates some natural kind of ins and outs for the project that, that really kind of creates a dynamic environment on the site. So we always show the project with and without trees. Tony always likes when we put the trees back in, but it really just lets you see the building in context, you can see that from the, the physical model. A few things to note, we've really worked at refining this stone base and added that material in these sections, and that's indicated by the gray color in that model. We also have some material samples that I'll, I'll touch on in a second. We've worked at how these apertures start to address the street and where they punch into the project, and that wraps around on the west side of the project. We've looked at some various materials for this canopy, and we have this kind of bright brushed metal that is, is an inflection to the inn. And then we also have looked at enclosing the kids' space on level one with a glass corner. This is a vantage from high and north, so you can see what we're trying to do with regards to this grand civic stair and getting you up into the project. Tony's going to touch a little bit on the signature transition element. You can see the garage in the background, as well as the foregrounded library from this vantage, and, you know, from across the street, it has a, you know, the intent is to have a really engaging presence and invite people into the project, again with and without the foliage on, on the site. And then there were some questions last time about the transparency of the upper volume, so we wanted to make that clear. So this is a night rendering, and you can really, or evening rendering from the south side and the plaza, and then really you can kind of see the, the kind of inversion of solid to, to void at night, so you can really kind of see the, the inside glowing and the visibility through the, through the glass at the ground story, as well as how that affects the upper story and the visibility in, in there. So it really kind of creates this volume of, of space at the top that's very bright and light.
I have one question before you move on. Is this translucent here, these shinier panels? I'm assuming these are opaque?
That's, that's correct.
And then this portion's translucent?
That's correct. And the translucent, the, we call it vision glass, so vision glass wraps the entire project or the entire upper volume. Sometimes it has more solid, sometimes it has more glass. So on the Rock Cress and High Street corners, it has the most glass, Rock Cress and High, and then on this vantage, that's where we get the most glass at the corners, and then it gradually goes to a, a more solid material. So anything that you see in the model that's clear is vision glass, and then anything that's white on that upper volume is going to be a metal panel.
Thank you.
And then we broke, wanted to break down just so council was clear on what's what. So we've been working with, trying to find an appropriate stone, really trying to reflect the texture and the variation of the surrounding, some of the surrounding sites and context. So we've been looking at a longer cast stone that has a kind of corbling, so you create some texture and life to that, to that ground level, and something I think that we see in and around Dublin. So that's reflective of this column. You can see the mock-up that we've been working on, it's about four by four, and then you can also see it on the table right there, that's one half of one, one stone piece, one course. And then the glass, we have glass throughout the project in combination on the upper with the metal panel, and then that's really also on the table. It has, glass has a different effect in night or in day, obviously, and so you can, it has different levels, but it's extremely clear and, and has a low E coating to be energy-conscious. And then we've also looked at a composite metal panel, also on the table, which has a brushed finish, will be very bright, you can kind of see the reflection that, that creates, it's very kind of muted and, and tame in terms of the way that it creates a bright and crisp surface. And then the white mica, this is also a composite metal panel that will be in combination with the glass on the upper volume, so that has a very bright and light effect also. Tony's going to touch on our urban environment and landscape design.
Thanks, Michael. Okay, so turn your attention first off to the site plan. The library is obviously a building about community, and as such, we want to make sure that the urban environment and landscape architecture around the building reflect that. Our goal from the beginning has been to really elevate the sense of the outdoor environments around the library from the start of this project. As such, you will see that there's an extremely nice, sustainable kind of rain garden that happens at the front of the site. Rock Cress Parkway is really meant to mirror the intent of what's happening on the north side of Rock Cress Parkway. The plaza is certainly a large gesture that helps to welcome folks from the community into the library, into a larger kind of 5,000-square-foot open space. And then the garden that lives between the garage and the library is kind of a more quiet respite zone for patrons to maybe escape and get away from the busier plaza. So I'm going to work around the site, starting down at the corner of Rock Cress and North High. This, this, obviously, this view is really meant to kind of show what's happening with the design of the streetscape in this area, also showing that we really have kind of a welcoming corner as folks are coming from Bridge Park and coming off of the pedestrian bridge, bike racks, lots of native perennial plantings. I mentioned the rain garden seating, and one feature in this area is kind of the shortcut path from the lower, lower elevation up to the plaza. As we head south on North High Street, this sort of gives the image of the project kind of from the prominent corner coming from historic Dublin, as Mike mentioned. You'll see the transition element there really kind of helps to frame the view of the plaza and the library in the background, which is a nice feature. The ramp in the foreground is the accessible route from the accessible parking that's happening there right on High Street. And you can see that we've tried to incorporate a lot of the comments that we've gotten from the community about not having, you know, kind of a simple corporate-looking landscape and having something that's very nice and native and lush here in the foreground. As we scroll around, this is kind of a hover view, a little bit higher than the view that Mike showed earlier. This gives you a view looking into the garden. You could see that we're creating a really nice amenity space there with lots of seating, lighting for evening, so that when folks are out here in the evening, they feel safe. Paths, there's an event space. You see that we've started to show this idea of food trucks, and we've also shown previous renderings to all of you how a tent and sort of events could happen out in this space. This is a really great space that I think our team is really proud of, and it's, it's really kind of a nice thing for the community as well as the library. Walking into that garden space, as we mentioned, again, lots of lush plantings, all zone four, native perennials and shrubs and trees happening in this area, and you can be able to see also the garage in the background there. Again... Again, a lot of the seeding that we're trying to do in this area is flexible seeding, trying to make just a really great, flexible, convenient space for all the patrons who use the library. And then winding up here, Rock Crest Parkway, this gives a view of the book drop that comes out of the garage. I think everyone's familiar that the book drop is located in the garage, and a view towards the waste area and the service and evening book drop drop off there. For the signature transition element, we presented about a month ago, and after working with the committee on several options, I think that we presented to all of you that we really felt that the school, you know, harkening back to that, really represented the most authentic signature transition element that we could do. We really like how it points to the lineage of learning on the site and also feel that it plays very well with Dublin's history as well as Dublin's future. As I mentioned, one of the things that the committee was very interested in was how the old school wall found itself on the new plaza. This is the location based on historical maps of where the old school wall lived, so that works very well with the ramp and the stair, and the idea is that folks sort of make a journey or they transition through this threshold from old to new, from the street, up the ramp, up the stair, through what was the old school walls, and they kind of get a sense of where that used to live and where it used to be. So there's a moment of repose or a moment of pause that takes them back in time. Again, a view further illustrating those points. And then once, once folks reach the top of the ramp or the stair and they kind of circulate back around, there's this idea of curiosity, this idea of, you know, pulling folks back up closer to the wall, so they can then circulate back out to the corner and explore the windows, explore the wall texture, and sort of get a sense for, you know, really tactile sense for touching the wall and being close to it and getting a sense of the history that was there. Thank you.
Chris?
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Lozinski rattled off some numbers, I was trying to jot them down as quickly as I could, and I want to make sure I didn't miss something. If I jotted them down correctly, your budget for the entirety of the project is $18.6 million, that is inclusive of your community space, the transitional element, that is all in, is that correct?
That is incorrect.
That is incorrect, okay, glad I asked.
I'll try to run through it again. So the library funds for the project are $18.6 million. The fundraising needed on top of the $18.6 million is $2.3 million, and right now, we have a $1.1 million gap in the design development stage. So through value engineering, value management, whatever we would call it, we're trying to reduce that gap.
So the construction, your overall budget is $22 million, of which you have $18.6 allocated, $2.3 you're looking for fundraising, and then there is a $1.1 gap?
Well, yeah, I would say if we were to round these numbers, the $18.6 and $2.3 takes us to about $21 million.
Okay.
Right? And then we have the $1.1 million on top of that we are attempting to reduce, and then we have the signature transition element.
Oh, the $1.1 is a reduction, so then we back that off of the 21?
No, that, today, we've got $1.1 million in this design to remove, so we are trying to value engineer $1.1 million out of what you are seeing tonight.
To meet the 21?
That's right.
I see, and that does not include the signature?
That is correct. The signature transition element is 210 more.
So this is a $22 million project of which you?
We'll get it down to 20.
Have $20.9 million to build?
Correct.
Okay, and then you said there was $110,000. I wrote down the word shortfall, I'm not sure, I wrote that down after the fact. What was $110,000, is that the?
I didn't have, I had $210,000 for the signature transition element.
Okay, that's the transitional element, okay, 210. And then is there anything else outstanding?
Not today, we're in design development, so today, no.
So I'm sure you have gone through the exercise of if, if we end up only having, you know, 20.9 to spend on our $22 million building, what are some of the, what's the low hanging fruit? What are some of the first things to go?
I think one of the things we've talked about is the plaza itself, we see as aspirational and is something that we can come back to if we need to. So if that has to be just the grass seeded at this point with stairs, I think that's one of the things that we could come back to at a later time. You know, some of the other items were really just introduced to us last week, Friday, and so Turner Construction and NBBJ are actually looking at what those possibilities would be right now. So I don't have a list of what those, it's just very fresh information for us.
Okay, and that $210,000 for the transitional element, do you, is, is that in part of the $2.3 million to be raised, or?
Today, it is not.
It is not, so if you were going to include the transitional element, you'd be a little bit over $2.5 million.
That's right.
You'd be looking to fundraise.
Dana, remind me, when we talked about the transitional element, did staff, did council, did we talk about any ideas on how that might be funded?
We didn't go deep on, we didn't go deep on that, but I think one of the things that was kicked around at one point was the possibility of that being treated as an art in public places.
Right.
And you could take a look at leveraging a couple of cycles of that towards that, it would take two cycles, I believe, of your art in public places funding to cover that.
That's what I remember.
And at the end of the day, this plaza, I've heard it talked a lot about a community plaza, and a lot of it talked about being a library plaza. Who would be programming that space, or who would be allowed to program that space?
Well, we have, I guess the best comparison I would give to you is what we do in our downtown library, the main library in the plaza that we've constructed adjacent to Topiary Park, and it's really a combination of both. We see this as, first of all, it begins as library property, and yet a real sense on our part that this is civic space, and so how can it be programmed accordingly? So today, we would run it through library scheduling, but, you know, we're pretty open to develop a model that we think would work collectively for the Dublin community.
So in your space downtown, I was recently at a, my cousin got married in your Topiary garden, which was just a fantastic setting.
So just for correction, that's a city park?
That's the city park, okay. Well, that, that helps me with my question then. So if somebody wanted to do something in this space, be it the city or some company wanted to have a picnic or whatever, at present in your downtown facility, what is the process that they would navigate to?
Well, today, it is, it is not for private parties today or fundraising events for other activities. We actually are not hosting weddings or that kind of thing either on that plaza or in the library. The city park has a different set of rules that govern it, that are developed by the city. So for us, that means there are a host of activities that occur. We have had everything from multiple, multiple author visits to a naturalization and immigration ceremony, high school concerts, that kind of thing, and that's really where our focus has been for this public space.
Okay, and if the schools were wanting to use that space, then for the, when you had a high school concert there, is there a fee that they pay to use that space, or how does that work? There's got to be some insurance, something?
Yeah, kind of depends on how extensive it is, because for us, it's both some things that may happen out in the plaza but may happen in our reading room as well, and so we're looking for basic cost recovery on our part, anything from AV equipment to furniture, obviously food, security, that type of thing.
So full disclosure, the reason that I'm asking is that we're really lacking this kind of space in this part of our community, and so I'm curious as to if the historic district wanted to do an arts festival, is that something that they could utilize portions of this space for, or would that not fall into your core business?
Well, it would, and in fact, that really is the model that we've developed with the City of Columbus at the main library. So they were partial funders for those projects for both of our front and back plaza space, and the library granted an easement for those type of purposes, so indeed, I think that's a possibility.
And that easement was somewhat in exchange for their financial participation?
That's right.
In its construction?
That's right.
I think I'm going to have a few more, but I don't want to monopolize the time.
Anybody want to cut in?
No.
Nobody cutting in? It's your time.
Okay. About the vaults for these utility boxes, what, what is the line of thinking?
Well, from the, from the library standpoint, we would tell you, we wish they weren't there. We think most of them are existing, and I'm not an expert on it, and so I think they may have additional information from the break.
What did you call it, Chris?
Vault, you know what, Christina asked me what a vault was in our time, so it, you know, when you're walking through a city and you go over the grates and you can feel the air moving through them, many of the mechanicals or service boxes are beneath the sidewalk and they call it a vault, they, they put it in the vault, it's buried in the ground.
Got it.
So we did have a little more discussion when we took our break here. So a significant portion of the mechanicals on North Street are related to the streetscape improvements and the burying of the utilities along High Street, so a lot of that is city, is related to city improvements, and partially then also the AEP requirements, it's very, very cumbersome in order to vault them in terms of financially and just from a logistics standpoint, is what my understanding is from, from engineering. And I can have James from EMHNT come up and talk a little bit more about that if you want to, but it's, it was discussed as part of this, but in the end, given the constraints, it's just not feasible for this particular.
It's not feasible, or it's expensive?
My understanding is it's both, but.
We've been having these questions addressed with our design team, we're responsible for the public infrastructure improvements as well as the garage design, so at those meetings, we have been vetting this and asking what the possibilities are. Thus far, AEP in the Bridge Street District project has not approved the burials, so everything that you see of transformers on Bridge Park East, even the project on Bridge Park West, all those were explored, on that, AEP said no on that, and the rationale, as we've heard it is, and I guess when those get buried, they become, need to be submersible by design, and the cost associated with that is a very big increment, but they've also said they don't stock those, so that should it burn out at a point in time, the risk that you run of having a replacement come much later is high on there. We have asked our design engineers to explore all those options, we've asked them to look at lowering them so that the notion of if they are landscaped, they're minimal. We've looked at other locations on the sites, asked them to look at some of those, even looked at splitting up some of the equipment, so that perhaps some would go on the corner of the Derby Street parking lot or others, all those kind of things are being explored. But what did happen, because this was the only place available, when all the overheads were buried as part of the High Street project, this is where that switch material conduit is all running to on that. So that, there was no Rock Crest, for example, or these other options weren't in place at that point in time. So the infrastructure is kind of there for it. Even given that, we've asked our engineering and civil team to push to see what's possible. They said they are not aware anywhere of AEP approving burial of the switches, pieces of it, and that's the stuff I think that would normally be on the poles and stuff that we're bringing down by virtue of the burials, and that what?
Anywhere in Dublin, or anywhere?
Any of the projects they've designed on there. So again, we've asked them to come back to us, pushing harder on that to see what kind of responses we get, but they weren't aware of examples of that, where there were opportunities to put it on ground or in ground situations. If you had 100% lot coverage and streets and there was no place, on those occasions, they have seen it. We've asked them to explore that, we've been told it's going to be very, very expensive to do it if it were allowable on there, but on the switches, probably not allowable. So it is being explored, it's something we are still looking at.
Is something that could be relocated perhaps by the parking garage or someplace?
And we did look at, for example, the engineers last time brought up some scenarios where the facilities were moved along the eastern edge of the garage, that means a solid wall has to be built along that edge of the garage, which then has the first floor of the garage exceeding its level of enclosure, it's right at the 20%, as I understand.
It's exceeded every other level from this point, so?
Well, this is building code, so this is building, this is not permissible for building code, you have to have a certain amount of air moving through there if you're not going to have mechanical equipment in there. So that created a lot of challenges, and it also did a lot to carve up that green garden that you saw in the middle when we looked at those options. So a number of those have been looked at or continue to be looked at, plus landscape options, lowering, all those kind of things are being considered as well. We'll bring you back the final resolution of that piece, but that falls really in our court, other than working with the library and landscaping of it, it's less in their court.
And how about the mechanicals on the north side of the building?
That's the one thing, because of their transformer, they could move there, on there, and I think they can speak to that.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, yeah, we were able to move that over there along Rock Crest Parkway, again, trying to minimize as much as we could the impact on the plaza and North Street. That will be screened on three sides, the one side that will not be screened will be down in this image, so traffic coming by that will not see it as they will already be past it, same with pedestrians walking east. Folks walking west would be able to see it, but there will still be understory planting and tree plantings to the east of that, so I think it'll still be screened somewhat.
So in the drawings, it has four-sided screening on, you know, these pages are not numbered. I guess I can show you.
Yes, that's correct. This, this is a relatively new thing that we're grappling with, so we apologize for that not being updated.
But you are saying that this side of it will not be screened, and that's for access purposes?
Correct.
And that is a piece of equipment that cannot be vaulted either?
I think it falls under the same category as the rest of the pieces of equipment, in that AEP is just not really interested in this area and vaulting much of anything.
And I noticed on the drawing here and there, there are only man doors at the loading dock, there's no, going to be no overhead doors whatsoever at the loading dock area, just man doors?
You mean into the, into the library facility?
So there is a man door here, and there is a man door here, there's no like overhead roll door, there's?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what you intend to do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The gateway provision of open space, you have two gateways not provided. One of them is this location here between the library and the parking garage, I understand that one. Where was the other gateway, D6, lowercase, D2, capital G?
So that is related to the High Street and Rock Crest intersection, just trying to. Here in this location, there is a gateway feature that is required for the code.
And why do you recommend that that be waived?
ART's review of that, again, felt that the building and the design and the element of the, of the building at this corner met that requirement, that it does provide some type of gateway into, in terms of intent, into the district.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
John?
I just got one comment on the reconstructed school corner, which is sort of interesting. I noticed in the original building, there was a very interesting detail on the arched windows, and I don't know if you guys are going to repeat that or not, because the building is rather attractive, really, in its scale and how the windows were laid out, but over the doorways that look like the windows, somebody hit at that time? But over the doorways that look like the windows, somebody hit, at that time period had put extra effort in it. And you had mentioned, well, you know, if you come back towards that way, you know, you'll have, enjoy the texture. And this might be the only real architectural embellishment to really look at other than limestone. So I just hope you take a really good look at that. And in your sketches and drawings, we try to repeat that form. And I'm not sure how detailed it was, because the picture was far, far away. But, and then maybe on that wall, the history folks here, or somebody can come up with something to put on that wall or in that wall to make it a lot more interesting space than just a big limestone wall with a window and a door aperture. So I, you know, I think that goes a long way to reliving our history and making it interesting. Thank you.
Uh, my last question, I think is for legal. I, I don't know that, it's kind of uncharted ground for us to have somebody come in and say, well, this is what we'd like to build if we are able to secure all the finances to do so. What, what are our, what are our options to re, you know, normally, we would require them to build what, so for instance, that, I, I don't, I don't mean to make this comparison. I'm just trying to go from tonight. We never got the commercial built and we got all the homes built. And so now we're left with a void in that commercial space and we're trying to solve that problem. I don't, they're not apples and apples, I get it. But what do we do if we, if they are not able to secure all the funds for the project that we're approving in its entirety?
Well, I, I think that the earlier example tonight, it's very difficult to compel somebody to build something. We can say, you can't build it if you don't meet what was approved. That's easy. And that's really our recourse is, but sometimes people are going to delay things and, and we have lots of developments that are phased. And it's just, I don't think there's any way we can compel someone to build it as approved. We can put limitations, like we discussed earlier tonight, making our code provisions stronger. If you don't progress within a certain period of time, there are zoning ramifications. But compelling them to financially, you know, to fund what's been approved is going to be virtually impossible.
Well, we, we do that with, if someone comes in and is going to build an office building and it's solid brick and they come in and say, well, we weren't able to get a loan big enough for all brick and this side of the building's gonna have to be aluminum siding, that.
And it, and if we approve the elements that are here tonight and they come back, they're going to have to get your approval to sub out those different things. And you can decide whether or not you want to grant that or not. And the ramification could be, it's not built for a certain period of time. So they always have to meet what's approved, but compelling them, saying you can't file another application to modify that, you know, there are always ways that even with an approval and review, they could ask to modify it. And then it's in your discretion whether to allow that.
I'm just kind of trying to play out how that would look in this room if we were asked to do that, if someone didn't have the money to build something and how.
You never ask anybody for a financial statement for any building.
Right.
What they've got the resources for.
No, I'm not asking for a financial statement at all, Mike.
It's very clear that.
What I'm asking for is to build what is in the development specification.
It's very clear that he's looking for other resources in the community. And this is one way that he's advertising that. Not the least of which is the transition, transitional, transitional element, which we'll probably have to do some funding for, but we talked about that earlier. And maybe this is his first, first blush look at trying to get some resources out there from the community. That's my take on it anyway.
Mr. Lusinski, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming that you have considered what you describe as value engineering. Are you thinking that, that would come from the inside of the building, you know, features inside, you know, you might add to at a later date? Or are you thinking outside, you know, the exterior portion of the building that we're really discussing here? Where, where are you thinking of pulling the value?
Yeah, well, I think it's a combination of both. And I, I think that's why my easy answer, if there is one tonight, is, starts with the plaza itself, because we know that's something that could be finished in its entirety as we move forward. But we literally received this at the end of last week. And so we have charged our, our estimators, Turner Construction and NBBJ, to go back with that list to see what is possible. So I, I just don't have a way of answering that for you. But the number is big enough that we have to look at everything.
And what do you estimate that number for the plaza to be at roughly? Give me a ballpark.
I'm sorry?
What do you estimate that number of the plaza, if we were to build it out exactly as we were to like, just that plaza piece? Because I'm still not sure that that's gonna get you quite there in terms of.
Oh, it is not going to get us there. It would be more than the plaza, but I don't have the number for the plaza tonight. Sorry, I don't have that.
That's okay. I'm just.
I, I'm happy to provide it.
Yeah, no, that'd be great when you get an opportunity to do so. Because I just think the concern is, is well warranted in terms of, you know, you still have this 1.1 million dollar gap that you have to value engineer, whatever you want to call it. And then in the very next sentence, it's like, yeah, but all these costs are going up because of the hurricanes and so on and so forth. So that's, that's like we're missing. And that's okay. It's, again, I think that, you know, we want to make sure that we're working with you and stuff, but I think that those are really valuable, you know, valuable concerns and are valid concerns.
And, you know, obviously, we, we can't guarantee this, but we have had a broader based fundraising effort for some projects we did in Columbus about a decade ago, a little bit more. We had a similar project in New Albany and we were successful in raising the funds for that. I'm confident that we have many library advocates, yet they're big numbers. We're aware of it. You know, our, our, our hope is that the community's gonna step forward and help us and see the naming opportunities and others that. Yep, which, you know, if you, if you look at the other projects that are complete, naming opportunities are really of appeal to many corporations, small businesses, individuals. And, you know, there's, there is some work going on behind the scenes already and.
So is it naming opportunities both on the exterior and the interior or mostly focused on the interior? I'm just curious about.
I think the, I think the exterior naming, something like the plaza, for example, could be named. I, I think to name the building, I think our current policy is 25% of the cost. So we might even get the movie screen back on the parking garage if we do that, so.
Johnson.
But we don't take it lightly, but, you know, again, we, we haven't talked about it up until now, but I would tell you that we've been working at that behind the scenes for six or eight months. So I think we've got some early, early signs of people willing to help us with that effort.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, now, there has been some question, and I was talking to Chris and Christina. Our options, we vote on all of the waivers. The project with all the waivers and then with the five conditions, two separate votes. Is there any way to divide that up and sub-vote on any of that?
Sure. If you wanted to break out different waivers for separate vote, you could do that.
So for example, that screening issue, like we could say, we're gonna vote on the screening waiver separately from the other. Right. And that's, but is there a way to vote? And that's the question. Can you vote on the library without waivers?
Are there any that are time dependent?
No, but it would make sense to maybe pick out the waivers you don't want to approve. Yeah, what ones you have concerns about, because then we could remove those and either condition that they, like, remove that waiver and make a condition that they meet the requirement? That would be an option as well. I just don't know which one specifically you wanted to remove.
So I guess the only way to do that would be to make a motion to approve the building without any waivers and see if that passes. And if it doesn't, then.
Unfortunately, you can't approve the, the waivers have to go with, well, and the conditions have to go with it.
You can vote on them separately and there are some that we could postpone perhaps, but I think that we need a vote on.
These waivers as they have been approved by ART and P&amp;Z and all that?
I think that might be cleanest.
I'd make a motion that we, we approve the development site plan review for the Columbus Metropolitan Library with all, approval of all 13 waivers. That's my motion.
Sorry, Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
No.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
No.
Okay, Mike, do you want to do that again with the conditions?
Same motion with the conditions.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Aluto?
Can we hang on just a second?
Oh, sure.
As it's written here, it says that they be screened along the north side. That means the north side of the building, not just the north side of the.
Yes, that is related to the Rockcrest Parkway ones, yes.
Okay.
But, but just to clarify further, it was my understanding that it was essentially going to be screened on three sides.
It is. The plans you have before you don't, don't meet that. So the condition was added to make sure that that was clear, that they had to do that.
Right, thank you.
But when it says the term north side, it means of the building, not of the utilities. Because it says that they will be screened along the north side.
I think it's important to note that there was a tremendous amount of, of work done by AEP in burying the utility lines and removing those. That will make that whole area look significantly better than it did before. Yes, we've got some mechanicals, but that's a fact of life that we have to live with. And I'm not sure it makes sense with the stone that we have to deal with in our base to try and vault it. It's a good idea, but probably not practical for the cost. And AEP's telling us, we don't want to do it.
It's the north side of the unit, of the unit. So you're, they're screening the north side of that mechanical unit on the Rockcrest Parkway elevation. So we could add along the north side of the unit, if that would be helpful.
I thought all sides of it were going to be screened except for the east side.
Right, that's the intent. But the way the plans were shown at ART, that was not met. So the condition is making sure that they're fulfilling that requirement.
Okay.
It's more, it's a cleanup provision.
I'll carry on with the motion of the approval as indicated of the development site plan review Columbus Metropolitan Library with approving the development plan with all five conditions.
Second.
Put that modification to the one.
With that modification.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the basic plan review of Bridge Park D block. It almost got knocked off the table. How much does one of those things cost?
Probably about five to 10 grand.
And the high school was almost knocked off the table. Claudia?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a basic plan review for D block within Bridge Park, which is required to be reviewed by city council due to the applicant having a development agreement with the city. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from ART, which happened on August 31st. And also informal review comments by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is included in your packet. The site is located on the east side of Riverside Drive. It is south of John Shields Parkway and north of Tolleridge Drive. And the proposed development plan here is, um, you know, I'm gonna stop for a second because I'm not sure this is my right presentation. I'm sorry. The, um. Sorry about that. I skipped a slide. Here we are, going back to focus. Outlined in turquoise there on the blue color is D block, which is before you tonight for approval of the basic plan. And this slide kind of shows you the development plan for Bridge Park, which has had many reviews by city council as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. The first ones that became, that came before you were Block B and Block C. C is the one that is mostly completed to date. A block under construction, the Planning and Zoning Commission just recently had a informal review of the last building within that block, which is the office building, which is actually building A1. Block H there to the east of D block is also under construction currently, and that is immediately adjacent to D block. Again, you can see John Shields Parkway there being the northern boundary of the site. I switched orientations on you here just to keep us on our toes, but also because it fits the slide better. Riverside Drive there immediately to the west. And as part of this development, the applicant is creating three blocks as well as the extension of two public streets. Now, a little bit, a little bit of a closer view here. Again, Riverside Drive there. And then Laramore Street is getting extended from H block toward Longshore Drive. Longshore is this street segment, they are both public streets, that provides this north-south connection from John Shields Parkway to Tolleridge Drive. There is one waiver associated with the development plan, which essentially has to do with the length of this block due to Laramore Street not extending to Riverside Drive, which is really a condition regarding Riverside Drive and making less interruptions along that roadway. But the length of that block exceeds what the code would permit. And then I have each building in a little bit more detail as we're going through these slides. So Building D1 is a mixed-use building type, six stories tall. It includes retail and restaurant on the first floor, office on the second floor. And then there are 44 units for sale within that building. There's also proposed to be a pedestrian bridge that would then extend to the east to intersect or provide access, I should say, to Building D4 and D5, which will also provide parking for this building. The administrative review team did approve administrative aperture to allow the story of the main floor to be taller than what code would limit it to. And then the waiver requested is for two particular items. One is the pedestrian bridge to encroach over the right-of-way of Longshore, as well as for the building to be six stories in height. And then the applicant has provided inspirational images for that particular building, which is intended to be more of a warehouse modern style architecture. D2 is the building that anchors the block then on the north side, immediately adjacent to John Shields Parkway. It is a corridor building type with six stories in height. It includes retail on the first floor and then office on floors two to six. And there's also an outdoor terrace proposed along, on the sixth floor. We've been working with the applicant throughout the review of this portion of the application to ensure that there is ample room there where it is adjacent to the greenway at John Shields Parkway, as well as the, the bridge access to go below Riverside Drive for pedestrians. Waiver is requested as part of this particular building, which has to do with the front property line coverage, which is required to be 95%. And again, due to the shape of the building, the pedestrian tunnel and the infrastructure that is in place today, the applicant can manage to provide 83% of that requirement. Again, inspirational images are provided for each of the buildings. This architecture would become more formal as the final site plan moves forward. And the idea is to provide some sort of a juxtaposition to the AC hotel on the opposite side of, of Bridge Park. D3, as we're moving east, is a corridor building type again. It is five stories in height with a parking structure in the center. And the applicant is showing a small tenant space, about 1,000 square feet with a drive-through, essentially planning ahead that if development in a retail business were to occur in the D2 building, it could be serviced through a, through an additional tenant area within this particular building. There are 76 dwelling units. There are 76 dwelling units lining the space on floors two to five. There's also a terrace within the building for open space amenities for residents. And then there's also a pedestrian bridge going to the adjacent building. There are two administrative departures that ART recommend or approved as part of this proposal, and that's for lot coverage and ground story height. There are waivers requested for this particular building, which are addressing incompatible building types. H block, which is there to the east, is a residential building. And there are code requirements that say that a corridor building shouldn't be adjacent to a residential building. The applicant has provided architectural detailing, or will provide architectural detailing, that really make that not incompatible, as we're looking to work through these requirements. The other waiver is for parking within the building, which is proposed to be in the ground story, so there is no excavation happening here. And due to the grade, this is a waiver that is requested at this point and is supported by ART and staff. The last waiver also has to do with the grade within the site. So there is a lot of movement up as you're going east within this particular block. Images for this building, again, it's a modern design with a lot of glass and masonry. And then lastly, Building D4, D5, it's essentially, it's one building but two building types. It's a corridor building and a parking structure. It's five stories tall with the potential for retail on the first floor, 85 parking spaces on that floor, and then 552 parking spaces throughout the rest of the building, with also residential liners. And the applicant is providing parking for the office building within this building, as well as, as I mentioned, for Building D1 for the residences there. Again, a, a ground story height administrative departure was approved by ART for this particular building. This building also includes pool and outdoor space on the top floor for residents within all of Bridge Park. And then the waivers requested for this particular building, again, it's the incompatible building type, which I've already addressed, due to the residences in H block there to the east. The encroachment for the pedestrian bridges over the rights-of-ways, which we've had in the other previously approved developments within Bridge Park already. And then lot coverage, again, to make the most out of the building and the opens, and the parking maximizing that. There is a request to have lot coverage be at 90%. And again, there are the images for the architecture for this particular building. Overall, there is approximately an acre of open space required per the code for this particular building. And the applicant is providing three publicly accessible open spaces. So that is the John Shields Parkway greenway, as well as the open space between the two buildings that are fronting Riverside Drive. There are privately accessible open spaces in Buildings D3. And as I mentioned, the pool and amenity deck in Buildings D4, D5. And then the applicant will be required to pay a fee in lieu of the open space that is not included within this particular development, if approved by the required reviewing body. And it's fairly minimal. It is about a half of an acre or a little less than that. So with that, council is to make three motions on this application, similar to the library. There are the waivers included that require a vote from council, so there are nine in total. There is a motion required for the, for the basic plan itself. We have four conditions proposed, and they were recommended for approval by ART. And then lastly, council has to determine a future required reviewing body for this application. And this would include really any kind of application that the applicant is subjected to in the future, whether it's a conditional use, whether it's a parking plan, fee in lieu of open space, and then the final site, final development plans. And with that, I am able to answer any questions. The applicant and their team are here as well. And can you take it from there?
Thank you, Claudia. Real quick, were the, were three, were D1, two, and three always six stories?
They were not. We had, in our review of the application, discussed with the applicant, or encouraged the applicant to take a look at height specifically in this particular area where D2 is located, so that you have the eight-story building on the south end, and then you have a taller building on that end as well. And then in D1, and Nelson, if you want to chime in, I think the, what happened was that there was a lot more requests for office space within the area that allowed an additional story to be desired for this building as well.
Good answer, Nelson. And it wasn't one of these buildings where we had, we had heard hopes and dreams about a grocery store? And that's not in any of that, is it?
Nelson Yoder, Crawford Way Development Partners. So we have been looking at a grocery in this block for a very long time, since the beginning. And what has been going on is grocery market in general is in turmoil, as I'm sure you've seen and heard, with new people coming into the market, with Amazon really turning everything upside down. So you have Amazon Go stores that are 3,000 square feet, at the same time as you have traditional grocery stores that are 120,000 square feet. We looked at, at this with a, a large-scale, more traditional grocery from the beginning. And this building used to extend all the way across Longshore, and it create essentially a wall along the greenway. And we were sticking with that for a very long time. As part of that process, we also had a loading dock back up on Mooney Street across from the condos. And it was a sacrifice that we were looking at as a, as a necessary evil, to be able to accommodate a grocer of the, the old school, in that, that particular style. So with, with our grocery, a large-scale grocery kind of exiting stage left over the last several months, it ended up being a real opportunity for us to improve the plan a lot. And now Longshore Street continues all the way through to the greenway. We've had, we had Longshore turning down to interrupt the block length initially, and actually had a lot of problems with engineering, worried about people turning out of the, the center and trying to weave into, to cross over on John Shields Parkway Bridge. So this, this ended up opening up a nice view corridor through there. The, and going to a smaller format grocery store is what we're going to. So we now have identified this retail space. We haven't hung our hat on the idea that, yes, this will be a grocery, and we're going to design all of D block around it. We have a, a size that will work for multiple grocery tenants that we're aware of. The one thing that we have done to the garage, which you may have questions about across the way, that the garage, Building D3, there is an area inside the garage completely screened from the outside for a potential pharmacy drive-through is the idea. Because there are tenants out there where a pharmacy is an absolutely critical part of their, their profit margin. So they will not sign a lease if they can't have a pharmacy with a drive-through. So in this case, we got creative and looked for a way where we could completely conceal it from view, and put it inside the garage where nobody will know it exists. There is a lot of grade change along John Shields Parkway, which was touched on, but I couldn't reiterate that. There's, there's about 15 feet of grade change as you go up John Shields Parkway. So that parking garage quickly gets buried as you go up the hill. By the time you make it up to the top of the hill facing a condominium building, we have a four-story stick apartment building that faces a four-story, three-to-four-story stick condo building directly across the street. So I know that's one of the waivers we're looking at tonight, but it really is like to like, it's residential to residential, four stories to, to three to four stories directly across the street. So I want to put your mind at ease that that is a, a good cohabitation of two different building types, located directly across the street from one another. And in this case, I think the, the changes in the market have really created some positive changes to our plan. It's broken the scale of these buildings down. We don't have a massive, you know, albatross down at the end of, of the project in D block. It's enabled us to pull Building D2 out as, as a pure office building, add some height to it, make it a little bit more exciting, create a bookend to what's going on with the AC Marriott, and then focus the residential, the parking in Building D3, you know, right, right behind it, instead of having one gigantic building that was, that was all residential and, and parking and grocery together.
And the extra floor is more for re, office space than more apartment? Here's my concern. The buildings are kind of getting bigger, and, and you want more lot size, so they're getting wider and taller and all this. And are you, are you just packing more apartments in there?
Absolutely not. So this is the exact opposite, I think, of what some of the people who feared what all, you know, Bridge Park could become. This is the exact opposite. So we're looking at 112,000 square feet of office running Riverside Drive and the park. The, the height that we've added is office space, right? So we've, originally we had 40, I believe it's 43 condos, not 44, over ground floor retail. And due to the amount of office demand, we came back in and added a plate of office and stretched the building height. To do that, we're going to a more expensive wood construction type, but it, it's worth it. We're going to just shy of 85 feet tall versus just shy of 75, which is what you see on the other blocks. So we're, we're a little bit taller, and we have office now on the river. And those are all for-sale units. So those are all going to be owner-occupied facing Riverside Drive and the river. So really, all the, all the frontage that you see along Building D1, Building D2 is a, an office building, similar to our office building that we're in, those of you who made it over there, ground floor retail. And then we have office above, five stories of office above. And when you look at the four-to-four of office, and you compare that to the hotel at the other end, you know, the ceiling height in the hotels are typically nine feet, give or take. And they're, the four-to-four is much shallower, I think around 11 feet, versus the office four-to-four, which is 13 to 14 feet. And you multiply that times six stories, the building gets, gets a lot taller. So we'll really end up with a nice bookend feeling with a lot of height as you cross the bridge coming, the new John Shields Parkway Bridge when that happens, similar to the height that you have over at the main intersection, 161 and Riverside Drive.
And they refer to them, I think, as living units. Are they all owner-occupied, all condos, or are there apartments sprinkled in?
There are apartments sprinkled in as well. So you have the, the units that are facing the river, that are on the river here in Building D1, are all on owner-occupied units. The entire building is owner-occupied. So that includes the, there are eight units in that building that face Longshore. Those are all owner-occupied as well. And for the, from those of us who live there every day from, I don't, live there, but I'm there from eight to seven or so every day, that, that environment is, is one where the view on Longshore is actually really, is really quite good. So we've set up the apartment, or the condominium, so that the smaller units are on that side. And really, the, the larger units, 2,200 to 2,500 square feet, all have these river views. They're more like 1,400 square feet, the eight units that are in the back that face Longshore. The apartments that are sprinkled in, you saw 76 units in Building D2. And I believe it's about the same number of units over by the parking garage are, are units that are, those are apartments currently. We are looking at going to, the units that are lining, the, the garage is going to condominium, but we haven't pulled the trigger on that yet. We haven't made that decision yet, only because of their proximity to parking and their ability to hit a lower price point for flats. So that's something that the market will, will bear out, and will bear out over the, the coming weeks and months. The H block buildings directly behind it, of course, are townhome condos. Those are going to, foundations are going to start going in the ground, I believe, on Wednesday. We're going to be starting actual construction, it's just been grading to date. And just as a, a side on an update, you'll see the, the lovely blue-green building that we've all become so fond of. That is going to be demolished, demolished starting on Wednesday. So that, that'll come down to, to make way for future development over in that block.
Any other questions?
So you must feel strongly about office leasing, which is interesting. Because you're putting a lot of it back in, so.
We are. I think that now that we've created this critical mass of, of stuff, and that we, we really couldn't have done with a, a lot of office out of the gate. But now with the amount of restaurants that are there and are on board, the living spaces that we've created for employees and the environment that's, that exists at Bridge Park, now office people want to be at the site. So we feel strongly enough about the demand. So we'll be in front of Planning and Zoning Commission for an 80,000-square-foot office building that is at the corner of Riverside Drive and, and 161 that Claudia mentioned. That's one of our A-block office buildings. We'll be in front of them in early November, I think it's November 2nd. We just went through for an informal. So that'll be 80,000 feet of office at the project, and then another 112,000 square feet of office to come in D block.
That'll really help our tax base, thank you.
Did you say some of that's condominiumized, the offices?
The office space is not condominiumized, at least not at this point. The condominiums are all residential.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, are you moving?
Okay, I have a few questions. So for point of clarity, the 44 units in D1 are condos?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. And then there were 175 units overall, so the, the balance are all apartments?
Correct.
Okay. The block immediately to the north of D block, we keep talking about this building, D2, being a bookend, but we really have another block to go in the district before we get to Tuller Road. You have any inklings of what might happen there?
Maybe. Al Vrabel still owns that land, and he's been very slow to be willing to develop it. But we've been talking to him for, for five years now about expanding the project to the north, and those discussions are ongoing. What we can say is that whether or not the, that, that develops, or it becomes, continues to be a nice front lawn for Al, that the, the bridge that's going to go across the John Shields Parkway will continue to frame this forever between John Shields and 161. So I, I think that creating this as a composition visually between those two bridges makes a lot of sense, and that if something else happens on the other side eventually, outside of everyone here's control, then I think we could make it make sense.
Well, I think they might have, whoever, even if it's you that develops that next parcel, might feel differently about where the bookend belongs, but...
You can always make a bigger bookend.
Yeah, that's good. No, I, I think... I, I see two problems with making these, Building D1 and D2, six stories. One of the reasons in the staff report is that it sits low. And so it won't feel bigger than the building immediately to the east. And, you know, I don't know that that's, that that's going to be really palatable. It's going to feel like it's going to feel on Riverside Drive, and that's where the predominantly people will experience it. I, I don't know that just because there's an office user for a building, that the building should necessarily get taller. I, I think that maybe a floor is substituted, that there's perhaps three stories of residential retail on the bottom and office on the second floor, rather than just making the building, building larger in general.
We're already on the small side of a condo development, and in our, in our case here, we would simply remove the office by adding, if, if height is a major concern, then that, that would be our response to that. And as far as the office building, removing a floor of the office actually would make the office building less expensive, and we could do that as well. We thought we were doing a good thing, that would be appreciated by the city by adding office space to the project. But if that's not the case, we can always pull it back out.
Well, you know, we have, we have codes, and we have a vision for the place. And, you know, I understand that, you know, you might want to throw that out there. But I, I don't know that those are compelling reasons to abandon our code that was written for a good reason, and we spent a whole, a lot of money doing that.
If I may, D2 is permitted to be six stories. It's D1 that is requesting a waiver to that extra story.
The, the six-story height is something that was approved for the entire Riverside neighborhood? So is it, is it a six-story just because of the particular building type? I'm sorry, that I'm not aware of.
Right, so the, the D2 building is the corridor building type, which is permitted to be six stories max. It's the mixed-use building, which is D1, that has a five-story max.
So is it possible for us to just make the building, D1, a corridor building?
We'd have to look at what other waivers are creates, but that isn't, yes, and always...
When you look at every other building at Bridge Park, you know, C, C, well, our building, for example, I guess, B1, B2 are buildings that are mixed-use with ground floor retail, second floor office, and four floors of residential above, so, I mean, it definitely exists.
Right, and I mean, the discussions that we've had with the applicant in our reviews was to also create a little bit less of a... And I don't, I'm struggling for a word, but I'm going to say generic, so that this block would sets itself apart a little bit from what we see in C and D, C and B particularly, where you have a very similar building type with similar heights in a very arranged pattern. So this, in our view, was going to give that, give that pattern a little bit of a break and a little bit more interest. That's really why staff, as well as ART, looked at this being approvable waivers.
We also found too, you know, we started with the design that Sullivan Bruck did for the five-story... did for the five-story building, which was ground floor, retail, and then just four stories of condos above. And when we made the change to add the office and add its height to the building, it actually looked much, much better, because it had, it was taller for its width, the proportions of the building were much, much better than they were before. So especially as a contrast to the other buildings that are on the block. So I think this is an improved aesthetic, I think it's improved program for the city, and we're really not talking, if we're talking about how we define the building, and I think there, there may be a way around this where this wouldn't even necessarily have to be waiver. We're not looking to punt this down the road. I, I think it stands on its own merits to be a waiver tonight, and we can always look at making the waiver go away by the time we get to final.
Okay. So the ART granted a departure, administrative departure from, for lot coverage, and I believe that was on building, is that on building D1 or D4, D5?
Four, it's four and five, I think.
It was D3.
Okay, that, that has the approval of the ART for a 90 percent lot coverage?
It's 88 from 80.
Okay. And then they're requesting a waiver for lot coverage waiver on?
D4, V, which is the parking garage from 80 to 90.
Okay, so these two buildings, adjacent buildings, will have lot coverage in excess of what code permits?
Mm-hmm. And in excess of the 10 percent that is approvable by ART for this particular building.
So that's why ART didn't approve the lot coverage on this building, because it's a full 10 percent versus the 8 percent?
It's exceeding 10 percent. They are allowed to do 10, so 88 to 80 is 10 percent. So they were allowed to grant that departure.
Okay, not, not 10 percent of a departure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Well, I, I think there's a, a couple of problems with the D3, D4, D5 building. One is the compatible uses across the street. We're going to have, particularly in building D3, we won't have uses immediately across Mooney Street. So I know that's one of the waivers being asked for, and so I'm wondering what our options are to mitigate that impact, because I think it'll have a very negative impact on, I don't know if they're townhomes or...
Yeah, they're three to four-story stick-built townhomes. It's Block H that's under construction now, and you can see signs when you drive by showing what that looks like. And they're across the street from four-story residential. So it, it will be like to like, you know, one will be owner-occupied, and the other side of the street will be, will be for rent. But what we've seen is that our, our for renters are people who are selling their houses in Ledgewood and moving to rent units at Bridge Park. So if, in terms of architecture, they're going to be very similar in types, in terms of people who are living there. In some cases, they're going to be people who were neighbors six months before in the same neighborhood, moving, moving here, as well as having some other units there where we've got younger professionals that are living right, right alongside. So I, I think our, our current design has done everything possible to do a, a transition between owner-occupied and, and residential. I mean, this is a dream come true, honestly, when you look at it. You have a very high scale, very high-density development. You're able to scale down to four-story, across the street from three to four-story units. It's about as good as it gets.
I'm not sure that I'm following you, because there is a, um, a waiver being requested for incompatible uses.
It's essentially because the applicant has to pick a building type, and the building type picked is in the code incompatible. If they would have picked an apartment building type, then it wouldn't have been an incompatible building type. But because there's the retail on the first floor, and there is the parking on the first floor, and the residential lines it, it fits better into the, into the building type that is considered incompatible. But as the applicant stated, there is residential across the street from the residential. It's lined, I guess.
So the portion of building D3 along Mooney Street on the ground floor is residential?
It is slightly elevated due to the grade, but yes.
By three or four feet, so essentially it feels like...
Do you have access onto Mooney Street from those residential units, or is the access from the interior portion of the building?
The access is from the interior.
Okay, so...
There are porches from that, out of that area, though, so there is an engagement with the street, or just a few feet above there.
But no access, so it's going to be a, a different from either side. Let me get my notes back out here.
Could I ask a real quick question while you're looking?
Sure.
Mr. Yoder, were the building heights that we're seeing presented this evening, were they the same building heights that were presented to planning and zoning commission?
Yes, they are. You mean for an informal?
Yes.
Yeah, they're exactly the same.
Okay.
We haven't changed anything since.
So you, you, you haven't come to us asking for six stories where you, where what was presented to planning and zoning was five, or anything like that?
No, it's exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
We got their feedback a couple of weeks ago, and I'd say that the reception was, was overwhelmingly positive to the project, what we were doing, and the changes in the uses. And I think when we came before them before, we were primarily retail-driven, very little office, and not, no condos at that point, and then came back with a very different plan. So I think they were very, very happy with the changes.
Right. Well, you were there in person, I wasn't, but I did read the minutes, but I, I appreciate your perspective. Thank you.
I want to say, I want to compliment you on the change of architecture. I think it's going to be interesting. I think it's going to be an improvement to the overall running facade of that whole street. Then I also get your waivers on the ceiling height for condensed spaces like that, so I, I think that's a good move.
On those ceiling height waivers, it looks like you're 10-foot-eight floor-to-floor. What will the ceiling heights be on those units?
We have 10-foot-eight floor-to-floor, you can get to nine-foot ceilings. But on the, the for sale units were at least 10-foot ceilings. The, the, I think the waiver you were talking about was the one that was for the garage. We, we created some small shop space to line the garage, so that when you were on Long, Long Shore Street, you didn't see the cars as much. And those spaces have lower ceilings, but they're also much smaller spaces that are geared for, for smaller, lower-rent spaces, and it's totally appropriate for this type of business. We want to keep that affordable, and that's one way to do it, and also have it, have it work with the four-to-four of the garage. I think the 10.7 feet is, is the waiver you're referring to, which is an administrative departure for just the garage retail liner spaces.
Okay.
May I actually ask for an increased ceiling height on the, was it building D1 or D2? D1?
Uh, D1.
Hey, Nelson, we need to, we need to call a timeout so we can change the tape.